Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to this the June 12th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members present are accounted for with the exception of Councilmember Carling, who is excused. I ask that you please join me and please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Question for the city attorney, was there any reportable action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no, there was not.
Okay, very good, thank you. Moving on to proclamations and presentations, we got a whole bunch. We have, the first one is a proclamation recognizing 25-year anniversary of the Livermore Collings Foundation host team. So, anybody that has been down to the airport during Memorial Weekend and seen those absolutely wonderful planes that are still flying, the B-27, B-17, B-24, B-25, and we've got the P-51 Mustang with those magnificent Merlin engines. So, those are the gentlemen that are responsible for keeping those things in the air. And what a tremendous job, and what an inspiration to have those shared with our city. So with that, I'd like to recognize the 20th anniversary, whereas the Collings Foundation is a nonprofit educational foundation to organize and support living history events and the presentation of historical artifacts that enable Americans to learn more about their heritage through participation. Whereas a major focus of the Collings Foundation has been the Wings of Freedom Tour of World War II aircraft, including the B-24 Liberator, a B-17 Flying Fortress, a P-51 Mustang, and the two main goals of the tour are to honor the sacrifices made by our veterans, to educate visitors about our national history. And whereas for the past 25 years, a team of local volunteers working with the Collings Foundation have made it possible for the Wings of Freedom Tour to visit the Livermore Airport each May so that the community can get an up-close look, tour, and even take a short flight on one of these cherished aircraft. Whereas the heart and soul of the Livermore Collings Foundation host team is in its legion of volunteers, and the success of the annual Wings of Freedom Tour is a result of their hard work, dedication, talent, and expertise. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore hereby honors the Livermore Collings Foundation host team volunteers upon the occasion of their 25th anniversary
I want to thank everybody in Livermore for coming out and support the organization, and I will tell you just quickly why I do it. My dad was forced labor in World War II. He was taken by the Germans from the Netherlands. If it hadn't been for the World War II veterans, he wouldn't have been freed. My mom was Dutch Resistance. If it hadn't been for them, she wouldn't have been freed. So when you hear the phrase, "They fight for our freedom," what's amazing about World War II is they fought for freedom of people they didn't even know.
Next, we have the, this is the, we have two of the proclamations. One is for Deana Andau from the Alameda County District Attorney's Office, and Alicia Morales, the Alameda County Adult Protective Services. This is the proclamation declaring June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. So, whereas elder abuse is one of the most under-reported crimes in the United States, where it is estimated that only one in 14 cases of elder abuse comes to the attention of adult protective services and/or law enforcement agencies. And whereas victims of elder abuse include both men and women of diverse backgrounds who have been victimized by strangers or by persons they know, including family members and friends. And whereas the Alameda County Social Services Agency, Adult Protective Services, responds to reports from individuals, concerned citizens, social service and health providers, and law enforcement representatives about elders who may be physically or financially abused, neglected, or exploited. And whereas the Alameda County District Attorney's Office, its elder protection unit, and its victim witness division provide a network of services to elders who are in danger of becoming or who have become victims of abuse. Services include holding workshops to promote awareness, locating services for elders, working with local law enforcement, and prosecuting cases of elder abuse and neglect. And whereas the Livermore Senior Services Center provides a comprehensive array of services as well as social and recreational programs to meet the needs of the elder population, thereby enhancing their quality of life and helping them to remain active, healthy, safe, and independent. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims June 2017 and every June thereafter as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, in recognition of elders being valuable members of our city and having the right to live safely and securely in our community.
Just really briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members for this proclamation and for recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Elder abuse is a serious social justice issue, and through the issuance of this proclamation, we thank the City of Livermore for helping raise awareness. Efforts are taking place locally at the state and at the federal level to help raise awareness and to protect those who have been subject to abuse, but we still have a long way to go. And also, thank you to the DA's office for being strong partners with Adult Protective Services in not only raising awareness, but also working together to seek justice on behalf of those who have been victims of elder abuse. It takes a village.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Nancy O'Malley, the District Attorney of Alameda County, thank you, council members, for this proclamation. It is paramount that we have strong partners such as Adult Protective Services and the backing of community members and agencies such as the county council. Thank you very much.
And would you please take the message back to the DA that she is just doing an amazing job. She's got a lot on her plate, but Nancy does such a great job looking after the community. So just thank her, and she's doing a great job.
Thank you for acknowledging that. That is the truth. She started in 2001, this unit, this vertical prosecution unit, just prosecuting crimes against elders. She has a vision and she has the stamina, and thank you for recognizing that, and I will pass it on.
Well, and not only that, but her, she is the standard of excellence when it comes to human trafficking crimes.
That as well.
And fraud, and so many things. She's just, has a phenomenal.
That is true, and I will pass that on.
Staff that she works with, and they do a great job.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of the City of Livermore, thank her for doing a wonderful job to protect those in the community.
Thank you very much, and thank you, community members.[599.04][599.04](applause)
And now, we've got another proclamation. Is Bill Boomer out here? Oh, oh, we got Dave. All right, Dave and Kathleen. So it's time to play ball again. Yes. Whereas, the sport of baseball is called America's National Pastime, and whereas the United States Conference of Mayors and Major League Baseball have come together to recognize June through August as Play Ball Summer. And whereas Play Ball Summer encourages families and communities to participate in the game of baseball, thus creating countless family and community bonding experiences. And whereas in conjunction with Play Ball Summer, the City of Livermore declares July 30th through August 6th, 2017, Play Ball Week in Livermore, when the city once again hosts the Little League Intermediate World Series. And whereas the sport of baseball teaches youth valuable life lessons of teamwork, perseverance, leadership, and sportsmanship, and provides a proud sense of belonging to something bigger than oneself. And whereas the best Little League 50/70 division baseball teams from around the globe will be in Livermore to compete in what is now the world's pastime. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims Play Ball Summer 2017 and July 30th through August 6th as Play Ball Week in Livermore, when we welcome the
Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and all the fans behind us, my name's Dave Wetmore. I'm the local district administrator for Little League Baseball and the director of the Little League Intermediate World Series. I'll make sure when I go back to Williamsport the last two weeks of August that I'll take this back, and I always hand it to the CEO, and we're always very fortunate to have the Commissioner of Major League Baseball there during our World Series. So I'll make sure they see this. It always hangs up very proudly in the lobby. We're probably a lot closer than I realize we are to our event starting. Teams arrive on July 28th, and as said, that's 11 teams coming in, five international teams, six USA teams. On the 29th, at 4:00, we're going to have our opening ceremony at the Bankhead, so we'd like to invite the community, somebody from council, please to come say some nice words. And then, of course, games start on Sunday, the 30th. We're live streaming all the games this year up until our friends from ESPN show up, and ESPN has expanded their coverage this year to include both Saturday International and USA Championship Games and the Sunday World Series Championship Game, 6:00 PM on ESPN. So we are very excited about that. If you haven't been to the movies, something new this year, we do have a Little League Intermediate World Series ad at your movie theater locally. So as we expand, we're looking for a lot of fans out there. Remember, it's free, it's fun, support your local team, and we hope to see you out there.
Yeah, if anybody can sponsor the, any of the events, even better.
It's, we're still looking for sponsors. This event takes a couple hundred thousand dollars for us to put on.
Who would they, how would they contact?
If they go to www.lliws.org, there's a sponsor page, everything from the program to meals. We have to feed all these hungry 13-year-olds for 10 days, and we transport them back and forth to hotels. And then, of course, all the sponsorships, everything goes directly back into the community. And this young lady just finished up with a rodeo about two or three hours ago. Our pay has gone up a little bit this year. We've gone from zero to zero. So we're lucky, we get a hot dog. That's one of the bonuses.
You get a hot dog that you cooked, right?
Yeah, 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 that's fun. But yes, we're always looking for sponsorships, and who knows, the name of your company that program goes out to over 80 countries. We livestreamed last year to 146 countries, and with ESPN's cameras wandering around that site, your sponsor banner out on the outfield fence or somewhere around Max Bear Park could be seen.
And 40,000 people show up to watch in person.
Forty thousand well-behaved people showed up last year. We're very proud of that. So, thank you very much for everything. And somebody up there's got to warm up your arm, because we do expect, you know, Bob's throwing, John, you've, Mayor, you've thrown before, so you know, you might have to get the, you know, the city clerk maybe is, would like to come out.
City clerk sounds great.
She looks like she's got a good arm.
City clerk is great.
Vice Mayor's got a good arm, too.
Or who can sing?
National Anthem. People in the community, if you want to come out and sing the National Anthem, we always look for that also.
Well, very good. So, L-L-I-W-S.
Yeah.
Dot org.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dave, Kathleen, thank you so much.[967.75][967.75](applause) All right, now we go to another one of my favorite things. This is the presentation of the 2017 High School Senior Arts Awards. So these are designed to identify and recognize and encourage Livermore's talented high school graduating students. This year, the Commission for the Arts interviewed a number of applications, they had 18 applications, and this year awarded 10 awards, six from Granada, four from Livermore High. The award certificates were distributed to each graduate at their school awards ceremony. And tonight, I am pleased to, it's not as cool as the certificates, but it is a check for $600.[1022.00][1022.00](laughter) So with that, we have Shelley Clements here from the Commission for the Arts, and I would like to recognize, and I'll read all the names first, and then I'll get down there and we can hand out the checks. But this way, Andrea Summer, Brady Taylor, Emily Chong, Carly Teruia, Kevin Gin, Megan Carpenter, Morgan Mayhew, Sierra Miller, Sophia Mufarej, and Sidney Spruill. And the, a number of these artists worked on a new bus shelter, which is down at Patterson Pass and Vasco Road. So if you get a chance, go by and take a look at that, it's pretty spectacular. So, well, okay, how we, we'll spread out here, and then we'll get a group shot, and then I'll come down and hand out the checks.[1084.83][1084.83](laughter) Don't be bashful, come on up, don't be bashful. Come on up, take pictures.
All good.
Yeah. Okay, Chris, you know, what we can do is have you come up, and then we can present your, okay.
They were all wonderful. I do want to say, we had 18 absolutely wonderful applicants, and for any teachers that are out there, we would love to see some more poets and prose next year.
Once again, thank you for your great talents, and I wish you great success in the future. It's kind of cool that you guys have work on display already. I think that's awesome. All right, before we go to the Citizens Forum, I would like to set out a reminder that the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission is releasing the draft environmental impact report for their ACE Forward project. It was released Wednesday, May 31st. ACE Forward is a phased improvement plan proposed by the SJRRC to increase service reliability and frequency, enhance passenger facilities, and reduce travel times along the existing ACE service corridor from San Jose to Stockton, and extend ACE service to Manteca, Modesto, Ceres, Turlock, and Merced. In support of the release of the DEIR, SJRRC will hold six informational open houses. To support this effort, SJRRC requests the City Council of the City of Livermore to take a moment during the next council meeting to announce the release of the draft EIR. And the Livermore DIR Open House will be on Tuesday, June 20th, from 5:30 to 8:30. Just drop in at the Robert Livermore Community Center Palaverde Room at 4444 East Avenue. So once again, June 20th, 5:30 to 8:30, feel free to drop in. There's a 60-day public and agency review period, which is going to be ending on July 31st. So they can also view copies online at www.aceforward.com, that's A-C-E-F-O-R-W-A-R-D, and hard copies of the EIR will be available at 26 public libraries along the ACE Forward corridor. Or you can submit comments in writing to San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission, attention, ACE Forward Draft EIR, 949 East Channel Street, Stockton, California 95202, or at aceforwardir at acerail.com. Any questions, you can contact Matt Hurtel. Thank you. So with that, moving on to the Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the agenda, and because that, the City Council can neither deliberate nor take action. Okay, so the first one is Nancy, Nancy Bankhead, you said 3.0 or 4.13? Do you want to speak on both of them?
I'm not sure I can talk on the one without the other.
Oh, okay, let's do a 3.0 and see.
I'm kind of cheating on this one.
It depends on what you're saying.
Okay, I went to, I got asked by Hegeman Farm to come out and bring some lambs because they were having a wool-to-sweater event. So I brought two sheep, one shorn, one unshorn, and two babies. They had spinners there, they are cute. They had spinners there, and then they had people knitting, and people from all around came out and saw it, and I just thought it was a really cool event. But the one thing that was the coolest was a swarm of bees came, and they were, it was 20 feet long and probably 10 feet high, and the wavers just kept weaving. And I'm going, Jeff, Jeff, and he goes, "Oh." And nobody moved, nobody did anything, the swarm didn't bother anything, went up in the tree, that was it. So it was just a funny day to come out and see real agriculture in Livermore. That's what I wanted to say. So I don't know if that's interfering with your next one or not.
Hegeman Farm is actually an appropriation, so that's kind of a different thing. What you're talking about is absolutely perfect, because, and they are just so cute, and the fact that they also take the wheat center on the vineyards, too. That's another.
They do a lot of good things, and they feed the United States, and the kids are getting their animals ready to go to the Alameda County Fair and sell their lambs at the fair. And that's another way for the people to understand agriculture. Grow up, you raise a sheep, you don't go to the grocery store and get a sheep, get a lamb chop, you raise it, and then you put all this money into it, because you bought the lamb, you fed the animal, you bought the feed, and then you sell it. And yeah, it's sad when you sell it, but man, you get a check the next day. So that's really cool for the kids. It's a great thing about agriculture and our history, which is Hegeman's farm bringing out. So I just wanted to say, it was at, what is it, the last weekend of the month? They have an open house, and it's a great way for families to come out and see what the Hegeman Farm's about, and the people there were absolutely, just absolutely great. Just the Hegeman, the history people, just fabulous people. So, thank you.
Great, and people, the kids learned that wool does not just come from a store.
You know, it was cute, and the little kids saying bad. Bob got to actually come out and hold a lamb instead of a, you know, a dog or a cat. I put a lamb on his lap and made him pet it and stuff.[1671.22][1671.22](laughter)
That's awesome.
Don't trust anything with horizontal pupils.[1675.78][1675.78](laughter)
I do all the time.[1679.01][1679.01](laughter)
Well, great, thank you, Nancy, and that was perfectly appropriate. Next, we have John Stein, Ann King, and Rosemary Young, and David McQuiggin.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. The only thing people forget faster than a flood is a drought. In the budget, there's $5 million for repairs for the damage that was caused last winter by flooding. There's no money really, it appears, in the budget to replace all of the landscaping that was lost in the drought. If you look at the major streets, Murrieta, Stanley, Holmes, they all have, you know, a lot of empty tree wells, and this would be a good year to start replacing some of those trees. In the downtown, once you get one block off of First Street, if you go to Railroad Avenue, about half of the trees on one block are missing. On Third Street, there are a lot of empty tree wells, and if you look at Carnegie Park, we lost a whole quarter of the street trees, the big maples that died, and it looks like a lot of the carabs are beginning to fail. So I would urge that you, when it comes time to look at capital expenditures, you begin looking at replacing some of the landscaping. Livermore is a tree city, we don't want to be known as a stump city, and it also affects property values. At some point, the disrepair and the lack of shade will begin to affect property values. I would urge also that you look into perhaps getting volunteers to plant trees, and some of the public spaces, perhaps you could get donors. And some of the public spaces, perhaps you could get donors who, if you put a plaque down next to the tree, will donate a tree. So in the future, I think Livermore is a hot, dry place, and we really do need the shade, and trees are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Ann King and Rosemary Young, Dave McQuiggin, and, oh, I have Rosemary Young twice.
Good evening. I'm, excuse me, I'm Ann King, the Director for Tri Valley Haven, but tonight I'm mostly speaking for Feed Tri Valley, which is a collaborative. And I'm fortunate enough to have another partner, Rosemary from, Rosemary Young from Interfaith Sharing. And what I'd like to say about Feed Tri Valley is it's a collaboration. This idea came up about two years ago where all three cities and all of the local food providers met and talked about what they could really do to impact hunger in the Tri Valley and to encourage people to give locally, because there are so many resources that get diverted out of the Tri Valley to somewhere else. The goal was to collect food, and this was a consensus, a nice consensus group. The goal is to collect food from July 10th through the 23rd. You'll see barrels around. I was going to say, I really blew it on that. Wow.
Many thousands of people in Alameda...
Get closer to the mic.
Many thousands of people in Alameda County struggle with food insecurity. And hundreds and thousands of them are in the Tri Valley area. We see them every week. Food insecurity results in negative academic outcomes for children, and adults are at greater risk for diabetes, hypertension, and poor mental health. It's really hard to manage your health when you don't know where your next meal is coming from. In 2016, we had barrels at over thirty businesses and city offices in the Tri Valley, generating over 4,000 pounds of food donations, which was shared among the food providers, Open Heart Kitchen, Tri Valley Haven, Interfaith Sharing, and some other programs. And we do receive some donations directly, of course, from local businesses. We're asking the community to donate canned and dry foods. And this year, we can take gift cards at some locations as well between July 10th and the 23rd. You'll recognize the Feed Tri Valley barrels. They're orange and black. Good local colors for us, so please support that Feed Tri Valley. Thank you.
If I could take maybe thirty-five seconds left of our minute, thirty-five, thirty-three. Getting back to being the Director of Tri Valley Haven, I just wanted to announce that our fortieth anniversary gala event is coming up, and Mayor Marchand will be there. We're very excited about that. This is going to be at the Dublin Ranch, and I'm hoping that you all received a proper invitation, but I did bring some flyers this evening as a reminder. It's going to be a really fun event. We can't...
So people want to learn more about it? Is there a website where they can get information?
Yes. They can come to trivalleyhaven.org online, or they can give us a call at Tri Valley Haven, or Eventbrite also has tickets.
Okay, so trivalleyhaven.org. Okay, very good. And what's the date on that?
It's June 30th at 7:00 PM.
June 30th at the Dublin Ranch.
Dublin Ranch. Thanks.
Okay, Ralph Allen Road.
Can I give these to someone?
Yes, if you could give those to the city clerk. Okay, Dave McQuiggin and Rosemary Young. Is there another Rosemary Young, or are we the same one? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Well, it seems the great and powerful Oz here had objected to my use of the term pedophile in conjunction with the police. Now, I was using the term in the informal definition, which from Wiktionary is pedophile noun, informal, an adult who is attracted to anybody below the age of consent. I use this term because there was a little more police officer charged because they have relations with a teenage prostitute. Now, I have to admit, I was mistaken on one fact, and since I do try to be extremely accurate, I will clarify that while the girl was, did begin prostitution while underage, she was over eighteen when the officer had relations with her. So some might think the term doesn't apply. But considering it's not a girl's body that changes on her eighteenth birthday, and the definition is based on the attraction, not the fulfillment, I think the term may still apply. So Perry Mason theory thinks that the officer can make a case for slander per se for comment made in a political setting where I didn't even bring up his name, and the officer wants to bring his name back into the news, he can try. But I don't want my message to get lost for a poor choice of terms, so I'll just use the DA term and refer to the police as a bunch of lying sexual predators instead. I'm sure that's much better for you. Now, the real question is, why did the great and powerful Oz here rush the defense of a man in his late forties who abused his position of power to sexually exploit a teenage girl? Maybe it's because I have daughters, but just what are you rushing to defend? Given your sensitivity to the word pedophile in your defense of the man, I have to tell you, if I see you around the high schools, I for one will be paying a lot closer attention. And speaking of schools, it's right of you to point out that the school board is separate from the city council. On the one hand, the school board is a group of five elected Livermore officials whose gross mismanagement resulted in, among other things, the wasting of significant public monies that could have been used for the betterment of our children's education. On the other hand, the city council is a group of five elected Livermore officials whose gross mismanagement has resulted in, among other things, the sexual exploitation of a teenage girl. Let's not taint the school board with your kind of stench. You've endorsed a lying and illegal tactics to the police for so long. How can you be that surprised they moved on to bigger and better ways to abuse their power? And now that you've admitted that you won't answer my simple little questions, next time, we'll talk about why you can't.
Mr. City Attorney, could you illuminate this issue for us, please?
If I may just beg the council's indulgence for a moment.
Is your microphone on?
Is it, is that better? I think I actually have to eat this thing today, so I apologize. What I'd like to do is just provide a brief explanation for the audience here and at home, just to put this situation in context and explain what's happening here. The city council has a portion of its agenda called Citizens Forum. That's an opportunity for anyone in the community to come speak to the council and address their concerns. It also allows them to address their grievances. You'll see a number of people who address the city council in a number of fashions. Some take a different approach than others. There's a community expectation of how you address the council and how you treat each other. The law, however, has a different standard. The law says we have to accept the grievances and allow them to be here, and that's what we're having here today. And from one perspective, you're seeing democracy in action. Another one is, Mr. McQuiggin has come back repeatedly addressing the city council on a particular issue that dates back to 2012. I have had conversations with Mr. McQuiggin to explain to him the proper form for that was back in court back in 2012. That's where a judge and jury had the opportunity to address a particular charges before you. You had the opportunity to have your evidence tested. You chose to take a different route. Revisiting that now, at this point in time, several years later, is not the appropriate form, and I've communicated that to him. So I just want to communicate to the public, apologize both personally and professionally to those at home and those here, just explaining that the law requires that an individual be given the opportunity to speak to the council at the lectern any grievances that they have. There is, it's not unfettered. As Mr. McQuiggin indicated, there may be certain situations where someone could bring forth a libel or slander action. That's upon the officer or upon the individual. That's not for the council. So with that, I apologize. The law sets a very low floor, a very low bar, but that's what we're experiencing here today. So with that, thank you for allowing me the indulgence.
But what we are doing here, though, is still maintaining the protections of the Constitution and the people's right to speak and to address the public forum and the council.
That is correct. That's why Mr. McQuiggin and others are allowed to speak at the lectern, and we will receive their comments. It actually is codified in your rules of procedure as well.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. These are items that are typically routine in nature and are typically voted upon with a single motion. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull for discussion or comment? No? Okay. I do have one card. That is for 4.13. Mr. Kasky.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Obviously, 4.13 is the appropriation for the Guild to continue operating at Hegeman Ranch. I am, besides Jeff Kasky resident, I'm also the President of the Livermore Heritage Guild, and I'm here speaking to thank you from the position as President of the Livermore Heritage Guild. The Guild is pleased to continue their partnership with the city and our awesome city staff in caring for this incredible historic resource and community resource that is the Hegeman Ranch. On July 2nd, from 1 to 5, we will again open the ranch to the public to celebrate one year of our monthly Sundays at Hegeman Ranch. Typically, that is the last Sunday of the month, as was mentioned before. This time, July 2nd, because we're closing in on July 4th. We just thought it would be a great time. And as we said, it's the one-year anniversary of opening the ranch to the public. After a hundred years, we thought it was about time. The Acts of Education, Preservation, and Restoration done by a horde of volunteers happened behind the scenes as much as in front of the public. So the public comes in on their, on our open houses. They see hayrides and blacksmithing, the aforementioned sheep-to-sweater, and that was an amazing bee swarm that we all just stood there in the middle of. We've had great visiting artists. We've had historic tractors, farm engines. We had historic vehicles, music, and dance. But behind the scenes also is fence mending, paddock repair, cataloging the plants and things around the site, untangling the historic electrical system, the mysterious plumbing, a number of structural repairs, including foundations that started out as wooden planks and ended up mostly supported by roots, the occasionally accidental liberated animal as well. We also are very grateful for our other partners there. On the site is 4H and Sunflower Hill, whose great programs we've talked about before, and they really make the site live, as well as the Heritage Guild has had partnerships with the DAR, Daughters of the American Republic, and Questers, who have come out and helped out both in person and financially as well to augment the work going on at the ranch. So we're delighted to be partner with the city. We think it's a great program. We invite the public out again July 2nd, 1 to 5, and at the end of the month, every other month, last Sunday from 1 to 4. Thank you very much.
You didn't mention the great longstanding tradition of whitewashing fences.
That has become between, between moving around the next layer of gravel and whitewashing fences, it is the ongoing, ever, never-ending project at the ranch, and it looks great.
And that is where the Tri Valley began, at the Hegeman Farm.
I should note, by the way, one of the things, so Sunflower Hill, one of our great partners out there, you know that they work with special needs individuals. We now have a small patch of ADA accessible area within their garden. So we're getting that set up with Sunflower Hill, so we're working on it.
And they've been producing thousands of pounds of food.
Ten thousand pounds last year.
Wow, terrific. Keep up the great work. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Sure, I move approval, and I'll second.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The opposition, it passed unanimously. 5.01, this is the hearing to confirm the levy of assessments for the city's landscape maintenance districts. And we have ninety-two of those and counting. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Anthony Smith, Management Analyst in the Public Works Department. With me tonight is Mike Perry, our Public Works Supervisor for Landscape.
Excuse me, is there a separate amplifier for the staff table? Because you guys just sound a lot...
I think we're all turned down because I'm not hearing my loud voice usually. Okay.
We may be just going deaf, but...
The city currently has ninety-two landscape maintenance districts organized under the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. In order to levy assessments to pay for the maintenance of these districts, the city must conduct a public hearing. On May 22nd, the city council approved the notice of intent and adopted tonight as the public hearing. Each year, city staff review the cost, maintenance level, and long-term financial stability of these ninety-two districts. Staff then recommends a level of assessment required to meet the maintenance needs of each of these districts. Staff is proposing to hold constant the assessment in thirty-six of these districts, increase assessments in thirty-five districts, and decrease assessments in nineteen districts. Of the increases, many are $30 per year or less per parcel. And assessments in the downtown LMD vary as development continues. All proposed assessments are within the pre-approved caps. Tonight, staff is asking for the council to conduct the public hearing and then to adopt a resolution confirming the levy of assessments. That concludes my brief presentation. We are available for questions.
Great. Any questions?
Sure, just a quick question. So about the districts that you're decreasing, why are we able to decrease them? I'd like to make sure that's clear.
Sure. We're able to decrease because they've built up sufficient reserves already. So as the maintenance continues, we're able to utilize some of those reserves to kind of subsidize the ongoing cost.
Right. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we point that out because that's always, I believe, a goal with any special district is to constantly assess the districts and evaluate the reserve levels, and whenever we can, actually decrease assessments, so.
Absolutely.
Well done. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do you have any cards? Okay, no cards. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion for 5.01 to confirm the levy of assessments?
I'll move that we confirm.
Moved by Councilmember Coomer, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It passed unanimously. 5.02, this is the hearing to authorize the negotiation of a development agreement to secure a housing development's obligations concurrently with consideration of residential development at a future date. We have Frank Guido, our Associate Planner.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. The Development Code requires prior city council approval to negotiate a development agreement for a housing project when the housing project is not proposed in a planned development or PD zoning. Such is the case for a hundred-unit townhouse project proposed on the old Codorelli Auto Dealership site on First Street. The project proposes using a standard zoning district. Some background will help set the context. In 2016, the city council reviewed a land use study covering the area south of First Street, generally west of Portola Avenue. City council directed staff to come back with a general plan amendment to allow up to twenty-four acres to convert from commercial to residential use. On April 18th, 2017, the Planning Commission reviewed the general plan amendment and the hundred-unit townhouse project, which is on seven of the twenty-four acres of the general plan area. The Planning Commission indicated support for both projects, but took no formal action. The Planning Commission suggested that the project do address bicycle and pedestrian connectivity to downtown. Per the Planning Commission's April 18th discussion, staff has explored bicycle and pedestrian improvements to enhance connectivity from the First Street corridor to downtown. Such enhancements would improve access to downtown businesses and the transit center. It would also support multimodal alternatives to driving downtown. Staff recommends negotiating a development agreement with Valley Oak Partners to contribute to and reconstruct bicycle and pedestrian improvements to support the general plan amendment and development within the First Street corridor. The developer is agreeable to entering into a development agreement allowing the city to secure their obligation to contribute to these improvements. The Development Code requires advanced city council authorization to proceed with negotiating the development agreement. Staff recommends adopting the resolution to allow the development agreement's negotiation to move forward. And if authorized, the development agreement would be reviewed with the general plan amendment and the housing development by the Planning Commission and City Council in early summer. And that's in staff's presentation. Thanks.
Questions for staff at this point? I think you're cogitating something there.
I am, yeah. I think I read a lot about this one, and I kept rereading it. Just because, do you have a specific density? I didn't find it in here, and that may be just my eyes. Density for the amount to be developed, because I think a hundred units there sounds a little too dense. Consider that we're moving with some commercial development, too. So I want to know more about this specific development.
Sure. So the development is coming in concurrently with the general plan amendment, and its density is within the general plan, proposed general plan density. And the development is not seen yet, but it'll be coming forward with a recommendation from the Planning Commission at some point.
The upper end of the range that has been applied for is fourteen units to the acre.
Any questions? Okay, well, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and we have one card. John Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I have no objection to preapproving a development agreement. I would just urge that in... I would just urge that in the design of a pedestrian and bicycle access, it be pedestrian-friendly. We don't want to recreate the problems we've had with the underpass on Stanley at Burieta. You want to be sure there's adequate lighting and landscaping, and that the pedestrian and bicycle path is not essentially a tunnel between the railroad tracks and a sound wall. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Stein. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of five point oh two.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It passed unanimously. Five point oh three, hearing to consider a request to allow an electronic reader board sign at private K-12 schools.
If I could, Mayor Marshawn, I'd like to introduce Ashley McBride. She's a new Assistant Planner with the city, and we're very happy to have her on board.
Very good, welcome aboard, Ms. McBride.
Thank you. All right, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I will be presenting on electronic reader board signs at private K through 12 schools, Development Code Amendment 17 dash 001. The prohibited sign section in the Livermore Development Code lays out five types of signs that are prohibited in all zoning districts throughout the city. Specifically, subsection B of the code prohibits a flashing, moving, animated, blinking, or rotating sign whose illumination changes with time or which is designed in a manner to simulate motion. Existing electronic reader board signs at public schools consist of continually moving messages and graphics, which are inconsistent with the Livermore Development Code. However, per Government Code Section 53094A, public schools are exempt from the city's zoning ordinances. When our Savior Lutheran School requested an electronic reader board sign at their property, staff determined that a Development Code Amendment was required. The proposed Development Code Amendment would allow electronic reader board signs at private K through 12 schools with enrollments greater than 200 students. The proposed Development Code text would permit an electronic reader board sign with school-related copy, would continue to prohibit a flashing, moving, animated, blinking, or otherwise rotating sign, and would permit static messages that may change once in a 24-hour period. In addition, sign location, projection, orientation, and allowable sign area would be required to comply with the Livermore Development Code, and the electronic reader board component of the sign would be limited to a maximum size of 16 square feet or up to four feet in height. The proposed Development Code would not add any sign area beyond what is currently permitted. As shown on this map, there are three existing private schools in the city that would meet the definition of a private K through 12 school with enrollments greater than 200 students. Valley Montessori School is a K through eight school with approximately 400 students. St. Michael's School is a K through eight school with approximately 230 students, and our Savior Lutheran is a K through eight school with approximately 281 students. If this Development Code Amendment were approved, these three private schools could utilize the exception and apply for an electronic reader board sign, which would remain subject to a staff-level design review. As the applicant, representatives from our Savior Lutheran have provided an electronic reader board sign graphic for context. This example graphic depicts a monument-style sign, with the black portion of the sign being the electronic reader board component. Planning Commission and staff recommend City Council certify the environmental document and approve Development Code 17 dash 001. And this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here today and available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. I have no cards. So, that'll close the public hearing. Any further questions, comments?
I've got a comment.
Yes.
I'll just say, I can see where the private schools would want to make use of that. It seems good. I'll also say that, I don't know, I came to town 41 years ago, and one of the attractive features was our sign ordinance. So, I like that. And so, I think having these signs comply with that is, is a good thing.
All right. With that, you waiting to make a motion?
So, I would like to move this item.
Okay, there's a second?
Second.
Toss up.
Third, same third, whatever.
Okay, seconded by the Vice Mayor. And with that, all, any discussion on the motion? No? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any abstentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you. I was gonna say, with the tie, so you do a jump ball, right? Oh, that gets us two.
No, no, no.
Okay, matters for consideration. This is six point oh one, update on the status of the Downtown Steering Committee. I know that you guys have been hard at work, and I certainly appreciate the time and effort that all of you are making on this endeavor. We have David Early from Placeworks and Steve Stewart, our Planning Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, tonight, before David comes on, just wanted to like, remind you, every, and everyone here, that we're moving forward with the council's downtown priority. We're here tonight to provide an update on the information gathered by the Downtown Steering Committee and a status of the committee's work program. You recall that, that the council formally established the committee back in April, and in establishing that committee, the council's direction was to develop a public outreach program for issues related to the development of the downtown sites on both sides of Livermore Avenue. The initial, with an initial focus on obtaining feedback on preferred options for the development of a hotel, a downtown hotel. There've been five Steering Committee meetings so far. There's three to go, so we're over halfway. And the next meeting is this Thursday, 6:30 PM, in this building. The work of the Steering Committee in its first five meetings has primarily been focused on receiving background information necessary for evaluating opportunities and constraints, and developing alternatives from which to develop public outreach. The work ahead for the Steering Committee will be the development of alternative concepts and the development of the final public outreach program. The alternatives are intended to facilitate public dialogue and highlight the range of possibilities for the city's downtown sites. And staff anticipates City Council review of the Steering Committee's recommendations and report at a special council meeting on July 31st of this year. Also, like to make folks in attendance tonight and also watching the video, that we do have a website. That's, the title or the name of the website is YourLivermore.org. There you can find information about the Steering Committee, all of the past meetings and video, present videos, and including sound of the presentations to the committee to date. And it's also a great place to provide input to the Downtown Steering Committee. And so, now I'll introduce David Early from Placeworks, who will give you a detailed summary of the committee's work so far and what lies ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and audience. I'm David Early. I'm a Senior Advisor with Placeworks. Just to remind you, I know some of you quite well already. Placeworks has been working in the city of Livermore for, I believe, over 15 years now. We originally worked on your city's vision plan before doing the most recent general plan update. We are the authors of your general plan update. We did the plan for the Brisa area around the Vasco Station. We've worked on Bart to Livermore, your housing element, your design guidelines, and completed several environmental review documents, both for the city and for other agencies here in Livermore. So, we know the city quite well, and it's a pleasure to be back helping to facilitate the Steering Committee that's working on looking at your downtown plan. This evening, I'm going to focus on three items, and Steve's already mentioned those. I want to acknowledge that your charge to the committee has been to look at outreach and create an outreach plan for looking at the downtown plan. And you've asked particularly that we focus on the hotel. That's exactly what the committee is doing. But in doing that, the committee has also realized that in order to talk about an outreach plan, they really need to understand the background information around planning issues in the downtown, and that it's really not possible to look at the hotel all by itself. One has to consider the larger context of the sites on both sides of Livermore Avenue. And so, we are doing that background information as a method of developing the outreach plan. And in addition to that, as Steve mentioned, we're doing a third thing, which is to develop some alternatives that will be a part of the outreach plan, and we'll be beginning that work on the alternatives this week, on Thursday. We've just finished the work of understanding background information. With that in mind, I'm going to focus in on the bathroom, background information. I have about 20 slides to give you what I call the greatest hits from the three meetings that we've had with a whole series of expert presenters. We, I'll be looking with you on a whole series of issues that you see listed here. I won't read them off, but these are the issues that the committee has learned about over these three meetings, and they've been addressed by a whole series of experts, who all have a long track record of either or both, working here in the city of Livermore or working on their individual areas of expertise. And so, those have included economists, the city's engineer, folks who are expert architects for hotels, an expert on conference facilities, that's Suzanne Mellon, Mike Payatok, who's a member of the American Association of, Institute of Architects, and has received national awards for his work on housing, and Greg Tong, who was the author of Your Downtown Plan and did a lot of the downtown urban design already, and is a national expert on urban design issues. So, quite a number of folks who've looked at the, at the downtown and have addressed the committee. So, the first thing I wanted to explain was a finding that was made by the economist on the downtown, who talked about the fact that downtown revenue is at about $1.3 million when you look at collections of all sorts, including property taxes, sales taxes, and business license tax. And yet, the cost to administer and serve the downtown is about $1.7 million. So, there's a shortfall of about $400,000 there. Many members of, of the public had thought that perhaps the downtown was really throwing out a lot of extra money that could be used for new improvements in the downtown.
There is no extra money.
There is no extra money. And in fact, when you're looking for extra money, it's important to look even at, for instance, at the outlet malls, which are one of the city's largest generators of quote-unquote "extra money." Even they only create about $1 million per year. So, generating extra money is no easy feat, and it definitely doesn't happen in the downtown where there's actually, to create the downtown that you have today, about a $400,000 expense that accrues to the city to do that. That doesn't, of course, mean that the downtown is, is not worth having. It's a very important amenity for the city, but again, one that does cost some money. The committee looked quite a bit at traffic and parking. We had an excellent presentation by your city engineer, Sherry Sheets, who pointed out that traffic in the downtown has remained constant and has even decreased slightly, particularly since the time that Route 84 was rerouted from off of First Street and out to Isabel. We, there is, at times, perhaps, a perception that traffic is a little heavier than it was in prior years, but that's actually not the case when measured. There perhaps is a little more sense of congestion on First Street because First Street is somewhat narrower and more pedestrian-oriented than it was today. But in fact, actual traffic volumes have decreased, particularly on First Street. Some of the major thoroughfares that are identified in current planning are both Railroad and Fourth Street, which take some of that traffic that's not accommodated on First Street. And two intersections that are really the key intersections when looking at traffic in the downtown are Railroad Avenue at Livermore and Maple Street at First. And those will be studied further throughout this process as the process moves along. There has also been quite a bit of study of parking, and you see here a graph showing parking both on Thursday at 1:00, which is the key weekday peak hour, and then Saturday from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, the key weekend peak hour. And you can see at all these times that actually the measured parking is not at capacity. You have a total of 55% of the parking spaces occupied on Thursday from noon to 1:00, 59% from 7:00 to 8:00. It certainly is the case that people do sometimes have a hard time finding parking. This is not to say that, that parking is always plentiful for every user who comes into the downtown, but looked at statistically, there actually is some capacity for new development in the downtown. Now, that said, there is going to be quite a bit of parking demand if, generated, if new development happens on these sites that have current parking lots today. And we did look at that further. Development on these two sites would displace about 565 spaces, which includes 293 paved spaces plus 209 unpaved spaces on the Livermore Village site, and another 63 spaces on the east side of Livermore Avenue. So, those spaces would need to be replaced if there were to be new development and the parking demand, the parking supply were to remain the same as it is today. But the city is looking at additional parking areas. We have calculated what parking demand would have been had the two previous proposals for Menar and Presidio moved forward. They would have required about another 712 parking spaces, so added to the almost 600 that would be replaced. You have a total of need of about 1,300 or a little less than that. And the city is already doing planning for that replacement parking, which includes both the I Street site next to the existing parking garage, as well as a new parking structure on the Livermore Village site. On the I Street Garage site, the city has narrowed down from six possible options to two, which are called affectionately Options Three and Six. They show various approaches to a structured parking lot that would be integrated with the existing parking garage, and would come up with a total of about 375 parking spaces on that site alone. In addition to that, the city is looking at four different options for the Livermore Village site, which include an underground site, as well as three above-ground structured parking spaces, all of which have about 500 spaces. Private development would also provide its own parking, particularly for housing, and so the 1,300 parking spaces can be replaced at a variety of locations. The committee has looked quite a bit at hotels. Obviously, that is the focus of their work, and they need to understand hotel operations and feasibility. They had quite an extensive background study presented to them, which relied on two previous background studies. So, that's actually a total of three separate hotel feasibility studies that have been completed first by PKF, by BAE, and now by your own economist, using data available from a company called Smith Travel Research, who really is the industry standard in hotel occupancy and finances. We've been able to show that hotel occupancy is quite strong. Oops, that was the wrong button. Here you go, that hotel occupancy here in 2016 is at about 79.8%, having peaked at 81%. And is considered, when it's over, about 70% to be healthy enough to warrant new hotel construction. And so, it is a very healthy hotel market, and that has, in fact, led to the construction of new proposed hotels, particularly out at the I-580 freeway. And you can see six different hotels shown here, a long 580, one under construction, one approved, and three that are under review today, which would add quite a bit of hotel room supply, but nonetheless, we don't believe would exhaust the hotel demand and would still provide some space in the market for another downtown hotel site as well. We did have our economist look quite a bit at hotel feasibility, and he came up with a number of important findings, which you see listed here. First, that a hotel could be built for a relatively reasonable cost. Hoteliers look for a cost of about $200,000 to $225,000 per room. When you, when you exclude the cost of parking and land, which is already owned by the city, we think we can come in at about $225,000 per room, which is a reasonable price for a newly constructed hotel. Given the occupancy rates, the average, average daily rates and occupancy in the market, we believe that a downtown hotel does have feasibility from a demand perspective. We do not believe that a downtown hotel would be an appropriate location for a dual-brand hotel. You are seeing that now out at the freeway. Those tend to be hotels that are branded with one extended stay and a similar chain hotel from the same company, but for a more, a shorter duration. While those make sense out in the freeway at a place that you're attracting, you're attracting drive-by traffic, that's not a, a good solution for a downtown boutique hotel. Instead, we would want, be looking for an upscale, full-service or select-service boutique hotel at a size of about 100 to 125 rooms. That would need to be accessed from Livermore Avenue in order to have the best possible visibility, and it would be one that we believe to be financially feasible for an operator to take over once it's been constructed. We did have our hotel architect assess both the east and west sides of the street for feasibility. He did opine that he felt that the east side had some strength in terms of design, one of the biggest issues being that as one comes in along Livermore Avenue from the freeway, that east side site is visible actually even before one goes under the railroad. that east side site is visible actually even before one goes under the railroad. You can see, if you look closely right now, the one-story Jiffy Lube is visible when you get there before you go under the railroad, certainly with a four-story hotel, particularly if this corner is made into one that has an attractive corner element on it, that would be a highly visible site for visitors coming into the city. It also, this east side site also offers the direct connection to the Bankhead Theater, which the hotel industry considers to be a plus as well. And so this site does have some advantages. It could be served with valet parking, which would then take advantage of the existing railroad garage. The valet service there is considered to be very workable for the hotel industry, and so the east side does have both some feasibility as well as some advantages. The west side, however, is also a highly feasible site. It does not have quite as much visibility, although it does have, particularly if you come here to the south corner along the site, you can get some visibility, particularly when you're just before Railroad Avenue. I have a tendency to push the wrong button here. I apologize. You have a tendency, you do have an ability to get visibility here. You would probably have the same pattern of getting to the garage here, although it would also be possible to provide both service and a garage access from Railroad Avenue in this area, which is a bit of advantage for this site over the east side. And so the two sides have some pluses and minuses in both connections. We were asked to also give a look to conference facility feasibility, and one of the interesting things for me to learn about this is that conference facilities generally, regardless of demand, in today's market are not really feasible to build from a financial perspective. People look back at facilities that were built in the 1980s and thereabouts. For instance, the San Ramon Marriott has a 12,000-square-foot facility that's booked very solid, but the fact of the matter is that in today's tax environment, you don't have the kinds of tax advantages that you used to have for building that size facility, and it's very rare to see a facility of that size built today because the financing and tax implications are so difficult. So a hotel of the size we're looking at today would be much more likely to have a facility, as it says on this slide, of a size of about 1,000 to 1,500 square feet. Our conference center expert was actually very impressed at Presidio's proposal to build a 4,000-square-foot conference facility. She says that that was actually a very large size for the market as it exists today. And in fact, if you look at demand, and we did talk to a number of users, including the Livermore Labs, the wine industry, and the Tourist Association, maximum demand here seems to be for most events at the size of about 125 persons, and that can be accommodated in a facility that is in that range from about 1,000 to 1,500 square feet for at least a single-use kind of event. If you did both, say, a reception and a banquet, or a theater-style event and a banquet, often people want those in two separate rooms, so you would have to double those, and that would still come in within the 4,000 feet that's proposed by Presidio. So it may not be possible to, at least without significant financial assistance, to build a much larger conference facility, but a conference facility as proposed by Presidio appears to be actually a pretty good deal for the city of Livermore. Our economists did also look at retail uses. They let us know that the retail market is quite both strong but also saturated here in Livermore. You do have ongoing demand for a whole number of uses, but the type of use that in a downtown setting is likely today to really rely on what they call experiential retail, that is people who are going not just to buy things, which if you want to buy something, you could press a button on Amazon and have it delivered tomorrow, or you go to a big-box retailer where you get a good price. Today, if you're going to shop downtown, you're probably looking for the experience of more of service, less orientation of goods, perhaps a very unique type of retailing, an experience that you have while you're shopping. So you might have, for instance, fitness, you might have healthy food, you might have healthy restaurants, and those are the kinds of uses that are likely to come in. Nonetheless, without additional residential development, our economist stated that the demand for new retail is very close to zero. You do have quite strong retail on First Street already. As residential is added, you might look, for instance, for 15,000 to 20,000 square feet of additional retail if you added as many as 500 units. And of course, 500 units would be very high for just these sites. It may be a number that would be accommodated in the downtown as a whole, but that gives you a sense of the interrelationships between housing units and new retail development. He also noted that the minimum viable retail area in a single development is about 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. So they would not recommend that we, say, build 5,000 feet here or 5,000 there, and that instead you would look for chunks in, say, 10,000 to 12,000, up to a maximum of 15,000 to 20,000 for every 500 units that you might see in the downtown. Finally, in terms of uses in the downtown, we did look at museum and gallery operations. We did that through looking at two case studies. The Blue Line Arts Museum, which is actually part of a parking structure built by the city of Roseville. We also looked at the Hayward Area Historical Society Museum, which was built in Hayward, and you see that in this photo here. These are facilities of 4,500 square feet and 17,000 square feet respectively. They have budgets of $200,000 and $1.2 million respectively, and I think most important to understand is that they each operate at an annual deficit where they're subsidized by either an endowment, which was given to them by a private donor, or by city funds, $120,000 a year in the case of Roseville, and about $300,000 per year in the case of Hayward. So you might, for a civic museum in Livermore, on an operational side, you might expect similar results. On the cost side, to construct it, museums today, because of the many different types of amenities they have, are quite expensive to construct. Our architects are telling us one should plan for all costs altogether about $1,000 per square foot. So a museum of the size of 5,000 to 10,000 square feet would cost $5 to $10 million to construct. Exhibits on top of that would be in the $1 to $2 million range for high-quality exhibits, and so the capital cost for a museum would be probably $6 to $12 million that should be considered if a museum is to move forward in the downtown area. And then finally, on residential, we talked about a number of issues about residential uses. Firstly, that there are major demands for residential use, of course, in the Bay Area. The housing crisis is well documented throughout the Bay Area, but even nationally, we see major increases in nationwide household formation, with 12.5 new households expected between now and 2025. For comparison, there were not just a little more than half of that in the period from 2006 to 2015 due to the recession. So we have a lot more households being created. That means a lot more need for housing units. The greatest increase in those household units, housing units or households are in young adults, folks born in the 1980s and 90s, who do have different ideas about living than perhaps some of the older generations, and are very interested in a downtown kind of housing product. This is also true of the wave of adults who are age 65 and older, whose children have grown up and they're now, so to speak, empty nesters, and are often looking for a less complex lifestyle where they don't have a yard to take care of and perhaps a smaller unit, another good demographic for a downtown setting. And these are the two demographics, the young adults and those over 65, who are the largest numbers of households being created, and so that's a very good indicator of the future popularity of perhaps downtown housing. The economists did look at a variety of types of housing units to look at how feasible they are. This graph is a little bit difficult to understand, but what it shows here is each of these bars is a different kind of housing type, which includes both townhouses as well as four different kinds of apartment products. What these bar, this bar up here shows the amount that is considered necessary to make housing of any sort feasible when it comes to a land value, and so anywhere that the bar is above this red line is the one that's a feasible unit, and you can see that four out of the five types of housing units studied had a possibility of creating a residual land value greater than that bottom limit. The other thing that's interesting that this shows is that townhomes, which are sort of the more conservative choice for today's market, have a much lower likelihood of having a low residual land value, and that's why you see the blank here, whereas the three types of feasible apartment units, although they're likely to be feasible, they also, depending on their design and rental and sales information, could actually go down to a residual land value of zero, and so in that sense, they show a little more risk, even though they also show a greater upside than the townhouses as well. So you'll probably see a development community coming in, wanting to build a combination of both townhomes and apartment products to balance out those risks and rewards. The city did also look at the affordable housing requirements on these sites. I think you're all familiar with the fact that the Livermore Village site was acquired with about $14 million of affordable housing funds under redevelopment law. If affordable housing is not built on that site, then that $14 million needs to be repaid somehow so that it can be used for affordable housing in other locations. So certainly an option is to not build affordable housing there, but if that were to happen, the $14 million would have to be repaid. The other way that it can be repaid, so to speak, is to put, is through a subsidy on affordable units. A subsidy might range somewhere like $80,000 to $100,000 per unit, and so taking, for instance, the low end of that scale, if you have an $80,000-per-unit subsidy and you build 175 units, you end up with that $14 million subsidy, and you've taken care of the subsidy that the city brought out. So as this planning moves forward, you will need to look at some combination of affordable units that offset that $14 million investment or else repayment of a portion or all of the $14 million if an inadequate number of affordable units is built. We were asked to give a little bit of information about other housing that is proposed or to be built in the downtown. Staff indicated two projects that are either proposed or likely to come forward in the near future. Chestnut Square with 150 units, which I believe has been approved, is that right? Yeah. And then the Growth Brothers site, which does not have a project on it to date, but which we believe will see an application probably within the next month or so, which might have about 220 housing units as well. We had Mike Piatok talk about a variety of alternative housing units and housing types. He showed the committee senior housing projects that ranged from 40 to 50 and 60 units per acre. Urban cohousing, in which people have smaller individual units but also share a group house, a group common house, that allows them to share meals and other social activities together, and is a great housing solution for young families and particularly families with perhaps just one parent or two wage earners who are both out of the house at times. So senior housing and cohousing were of great interest to our committee. The committee also looked at micro-units, which can be built at higher densities but still smaller buildings because the units are no more than 250 to 400 square feet per unit, and are great solutions for single individuals who are living in a housing situation together. And the committee was also very interested in artist live-work units, both the urban kind of studios that you see here as well as townhouse-type units. You see some urban studios here and townhouse-type units over here, which can range anywhere from 15 and 20 up to 30 and 40 units per acre as well. And then finally, we did have quite a bit of talk a week ago about urban design issues and began to delve into some of the appropriate urban design solutions for the downtown. Greg Tung addressed the committee and talked first about open space uses and sizes. He pointed out some of the types of open space that one finds in downtown settings and looked, for instance, at Carnegie Park here in town, about a 1.65-acre site. He showed examples of Litton Square in Palo Alto and One Colorado Plaza in Pasadena. These are both primarily hardscape urban areas in a small-scale downtown similar to Livermore's. These sites come in for their formal open space at just over a quarter acre, and in some cases have slightly larger street spaces around them that might bring them up to, say, a half acre in size. But so that gives one idea of a type of hardscape plaza that might be appropriate on these study areas, again with a range of a quarter to a half acre of size. He also showed, for instance, the Hildesberg Plaza down here, which is a larger site at about 1.2 acres and is surrounded by streets, which, if you include the streets, gets it up to about 2.3 acres. This, rather than being a hardscape plaza, is one that's quite open, lush, green, verdant, and has quite a number of trees on it, and really creates the kind of open oasis that some people have talked about for downtown Livermore. And again, for scale reference, is at a size where the plaza itself is about 1.2 acres with the streets around it, it's about 2.3. Greg did talk then about how open space is important to provide and that open space can be provided with housing to support it. Housing is required to supply 150 square feet of open space per unit on its own in the city of Livermore. That results, say, 150 units supports a half acre of open space, and then additional open space can be constructed and maintained using public resources. Greg talked quite a bit about pedestrian walking distance and mentioned something that the specific plan already shows quite clearly, which is that this Livermore Village site is actually a super block and is about the same size as four street blocks other places in downtown Livermore. Here you see the typical blocks at 300, roughly 300 by 210 square feet, sometimes even with alleys in them. This block is 730 feet by 575 square feet, and for that reason, pedestrian connectivity running both north-south and east-west through this site will be very important as the project moves forward. Greg was asked to also look at skyways and bridges because those are being considered by some members of our steering committee and are of interest. He talked quite a bit about pedestrian skyways and skywalks, which have been constructed in a variety of settings throughout the United States. They do end up, in Greg's opinion at least, having the potential liability of removing street life at the ground level, and because many pedestrians actually prefer to remain at the ground level rather than walking upstairs. He mentioned also that the underside of these spaces can be dark, and that can be difficult to grow trees on them, and for that reason, these skyways and skywalks don't always work. Greg mentioned that an alternative to such skyways and bridges might be to make a street more pedestrian-friendly through plantings and quote-unquote "taming" the streetscape along the street, particularly on Livermore Avenue that's already occurred further south, but on the half a block just below Railroad, it might be possible to do that. Greg even mentioned perhaps doing it on Railroad itself, but Railroad is also identified as a street intended to relieve some of the congestion on First, and so there's some question as to whether Railroad is an appropriate place to do that kind of street taming, but certainly the remainder of Livermore Avenue is a place where it might occur. And then finally, and I believe this is my last slide, Greg came back and touched on housing as a creative urban fabric. He mentioned that a concentration of housing is very important to the vitality of a downtown because it brings new residents to the downtown setting on a 24/7 basis and makes it possible for the downtown really to be fully inhabited all times a day. In addition, the downtown housing, as was mentioned by our economist, provides choices for these newly emerging demographic groups, and Greg showed an example of a project on a site he's very familiar with in Mountain View, where you have 30 to 50 units per acre accommodated in three-to-four-story development, and this is an example of what that Mountain View project looks like, that this is the kind of development that might create what he calls urban fabric to add additional people and additional opportunity within the downtown. So that concludes what the committee has been looking at up through now. I have just a couple more slides to talk about future steps. We will be developing the outreach plan in detail. We gave a very rough draft of the outreach plan to the committee at its most recent meeting. Committee members are reviewing that, providing us with written comments, and then we're going to submit a final draft outreach plan to the committee about 10 days from now for review on the 22nd and final action on the 29th of June. It's going to include several different channels for participation, so that whether people prefer to participate online or in a neighborhood meeting or in a citywide meeting, they will have opportunities to provide, to give input in a variety of ways, and every one of those channels will be typified by three separate components, the first being education, to share some of the information that I just shared with you, so that people engaging in the process can know that background information and be educated about it. Secondly, will be a step where people can look at the alternatives to be developed by the committee and understand what those committees are, what those alternatives are, and see an evaluation of them. And then, thirdly, to comment, select, and refine those alternatives, so they would choose one and then further change it, so we get a sense of what the broad public feels about appropriate development alternatives for downtown Livermore. Those will be supported by an alternatives-building exercise that the committee is going to go through over the next several weeks. On Thursday, there will be a small group exercise to generate ideas for both sides of the street, looking at what would happen if the hotel were on the east side, what would happen if the hotel were on the west side. Placeworks will be taking that information from the committee, revising them into more finished alternatives and bringing them back on June 22nd, where the committee will then evaluate those and make final adjustments to them, and then those four final alternatives will be approved by the committee on June 29th, brought to you for consideration on July 31st, and then will become one of the keystones of the public process that occurs in the late summer and fall of this year. We anticipate that the public outreach process itself will begin planning and design in August, and we will see some initial outreach, probably even before Labor Day. Of course, a lot of people are on vacation in August, and so we will be wanting to have a good share of the outreach and public involvement. a good share of the outreach and public involvement in the months of September and October. And then, we're looking at wrapping that up by the end of October so we can get a report back to you before Thanksgiving or certainly, at least, before the Christmas holidays and we can bring this phase of the process to a close. So, those are the dates that you see here. Again, three upcoming committee meetings, June 15th, 22nd, and 29th. Your meeting to look at the committee report July 31st, the outreach program in summer and fall of 2017, and then, final report to you, hopefully, before the Christmas holidays in this year. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions, comments? Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, I've got a, first of all, a comment. I really want to compliment you on a really superb summary of what we've learned. I think that was just great. I can't, having been present, I can't think of anything that was left out. I have one question. We've heard from many different experts and offering their opinions. Has there been, how would you characterize the degree of alignment from the various people that we've heard from? Are there any significant disconnects?
I would say that virtually none, actually. And it's been, you know, we would help staff and placeworks together, put the panelists together. The panelists, though, didn't really know each other at all before the meetings. They prepared their own presentations, but they came to very consistent conclusions. So, for instance, the notion that the east side hotel site has some marginal advantages, but that the west side could probably also work was one example where folks, where all of those experts agreed. The need for housing as a cornerstone within reason, but having housing in the downtown was another one where we had wide agreement across the economists, the urban designers, and so on. The one place that we have discussed where there was a little disagreement, perhaps, although I'm not sure I agree with others that there was as much disagreement, was that we did hear a couple of people say that perhaps a hotel right adjacent to downtown housing might pose a problem. Some of the experts seemed to think that there was an adjacency issue there, others, I think, did not. But I actually understood that to mean more, that everyone agreed that with appropriate design, you could solve those problems, but you needed to be careful about it. But that was the one place, I think, where we heard any difference of opinion at all. And otherwise, on the importance of housing, the feasibility of a hotel, the size of a conference facility, most of the key areas of discussion, there was pretty much universal agreement among all those eight or nine panelists we had.
Okay, so, we have a good set of facts and context for the community, then. So, one just minor point, if I could go there. When you, you mentioned the garage that we're focusing on and the, you know, the I Street parking. It was the council, not the committee, that made the choice.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that. If I misspoke, I...
So, I just...
I certainly know it was the council.
Right. That garage is not within the purview of the steering committee. So, and then, what I'd like to do at this point, I've got something I'd like to propose that's somewhat lengthy and I apologize for that, but before I go there, while we're on the topic of questions and all this, if I could, if others could weigh in and then come back to me.
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
So, just a quick question. You mentioned studying the east side versus west side hotel feasibility. Was there any discussion of east side and west side hotel feasibility? Was there any thoughts as to the potential for two hotels?
We have not studied that. The economist that we had look at the previous studies and do their own study augmentation was directed to look at a single hotel site. So, I don't think we can comment on that verbatim. At the same time, what we're hearing from the economist is that while a hotel of a size of about 100 to 125 rooms appears feasible, he didn't think we could go much higher than that in a single hotel. And even that one hotel, it's not a complete slam dunk. So, my guess is that if one or three of those economists were in the room here, they would say, "You may be able to get a second hotel in five years, 10 years," but that it would be inadvisable to think about building a second hotel right away.
And I wouldn't propose, you know, two at the same time, but just, you know, you answered my follow-up question. Then, what would be the future? Would one kind of act as a catalyst for the other? Are we, you know, spending a lot of time looking east side versus west side when we might want to, say, both? You know, reserve one for future date. If the first is wildly successful, then a second one may be warranted. I don't know. I mean, there are so many questions that are swirling around this issue. That's just one of many ideas and I wasn't the first one to suggest, you know...
If I could comment on that briefly, I think we did hear, and again, this was one of those points that I think we heard unanimously from architects, feasibility experts, operators, and economists, is that there is a downside to having undeveloped vacant land essentially in the core area of the downtown in the form of the parking lots, even in their surface. Some of it is truly undeveloped and gravel parking, others are striped parking lots, but those don't provide a lot of visual amenity nor do they provide a real sense of place. And so, to go a period of five or 10 years with a portion of one of those sites retained as a reserved site, I think they would have agreed might be something of a liability for that time period and that I think all of them would encourage that, at the very least, that a plan be made for the sooner development of all of those sites rather than holding a portion of the land for five or 10 years in its current state.
Sure. And I think it would depend on where the portion is and also, you know, what kind of phases in feasibility for one side versus the other. So, that's another, you know, issue I think we need to address is the feasibility and timing of everything. I mean, is it all at once or, you know, I think this is, this would definitely have to be phased because of the parking issues, but yeah, I'm interested in exploring, you know, as many options as possible. In particular, when you're showing the retail projections, we do have a lot of vacant retail downtown already. So, yeah, anyway, I think it's great work. Thank you.
Councilmember Coomer?
Well, I just wanted to get a quick comment. Thank you for such a comprehensive analysis in such, so few slides. You really put a lot of information out there and as I try and process it, I'm going to be careful not to make any specific notations along the way, rather wait for the, closer to final idea of what's coming on there. You know, I found some of the slides completely, and I'm completely on board, but there's some I found cringe-worthy. But that's my own opinion about downtown. We'll get to that as we go along. So, I really appreciate the amount of information you've put in there. I had one question, though, about the slide. There's a slide titled Hotel Feasibility and it talked about the 10% internal rate of return down towards the bottom. I presume that meant to the hotelier, not the... What was that referring to?
It's to the hotel developer.
Okay.
So, the way the hotel industry works in most cases is that one entity builds and develops and owns the hotel itself, the building, and then, they lease it to an operator who puts their license on it. So, that internal rate of return would actually come to the developer.
It just wasn't very specific as to whose internal structure that was going to be. Thank you.
Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, thank you. It's unusual for me to do this. In fact, I've never done any council meeting before, but I actually wrote my thoughts down and I'd like to go through them fairly carefully. I just want to minimize any kind of potential misquoting of what I said. And where I'm trying to go tonight is to a certain potential, you know, matters initiated. So, if you could, I ask for your forbearance as I go through this, but I think there's some thoughts here that actually align up with the conversation that Vice Mayor Spodowski just had with David.
This is sounding rather ominous.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, it's just, I'm just trying to be careful. Okay? Not ominous, but careful. And this is what I've got to say. As we've just heard, the downtown steering committee has spent the last six weeks learning from experts about best practices and the facts related to our downtown sites. There are certainly a lot of factors to consider and it's important for the community to be well-grounded in the best set of facts and assumptions that we can assemble so that we can, as a community, come together on a shared vision for the future of the downtown. If I may, right now, I'd like to focus on one factor that has a major impact on what we, as a community, decide to do, and that is housing. It is clear from the presentations to the steering committee and tonight that housing can bring a number of benefits. Housing has the potential to pay for all or a significant portion of the land. As we saw, 175 units of affordable housing subsidy could cover the $14 million acquisition cost. Some amount of housing is probably needed to support existing and new retail and to generally increase the vibrancy of the downtown. Perhaps housing could also help fund the construction of community open space and other amenities that require subsidies. However, at the same time, housing can bring some negative impacts, such as increased traffic and parking requirements. There is no one perfect answer, but rather, need to strike the right balance that best suits all of the competing interests in the community. Over the years, we've seen a wide variety of proposals for housing on the site. In 2009, there were interest groups advocating a 2,000-seat regional theater with more than 400 units on the western part of the site with a whole hotel next to the bankhead. Last year, the city council asked for proposals for up to 260 units. Last winter, I voted for a motion by Vice Mayor Spodowski, but failed to pass, to study options that would limit the housing to 130 units or less. Last month, an interest group circulated a design with 200 units. At the moment, I would say we have no clear consensus and frankly, a lot of confusion and concerns. Thus, it is very important for the outreach process to be done well and as inclusively as possible on this topic. My record shows that I share the concern that was recently voiced loud and clear by many members of the community that we should not put too much housing on the core downtown site. After all, we have the Growth Brothers site and the rezoned parcels on First Street just north of downtown that will provide additional housing within walking distance. However, I am at this point open to some amount of housing in the core that appropriately balances the city's overall financial and affordable housing goals. The reason I am bringing up the amount of housing at this point in the outreach process is frankly, to empower the community to entertain a wide variety of options for what we put where and when. The community may want to proceed cautiously in stages rather than doing a big bang approach in which we start building everything all at once. A staged approach would be less disruptive and could lessen the financial burden. However, some might argue against such a measured approach out of fear that more housing than desired would eventually be built, if not all the land was developed at the same time. With that in mind and with the concurrence of the council, I would like to ask staff to evaluate tools to lock in the amount of housing, once we have aligned on the maximum amount as a community. These tools might include such items as restricting where on the site housing can be located and/or controlling the number of units. It may be ideal if staff could bring this information back on July 31st to coincide with when the steering committee reports back to the council. Then, the community will be fully aware of these tools during outreach. Also, the council would be able to consider how to incorporate these tools in its deliberations when the report comes back from the community outreach process later this fall. So, if I could get concurrence from at least two more of you, we could ask staff to bring the, back the possible tools.
I guess you're, it's, this is, is the item under consideration? So, we don't really need to do it matters. This is really, this would be council direction.
Whichever. We can ask if that's correct, but in either event, I'd like to...
You have that opportunity here tonight with this particular item, but it does fit more within the matters initiated, but you have that latitude with your agenda as it's written.
It is matters for consideration.
If you want to talk about this time, this particular item gives directions to staff, you have that latitude.
Okay.
I would actually prefer that we, that table that motion until after the public hearing portion of the item, just so we...
Certainly after the...
Sure. That's more than I was seeking, but it makes sense.
Okay. Agreed. Councilmember Coomer? All right. Okay. Any other questions, comments at this point? Okay. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Gene King, Carol Walrath, and William Dunlop.
Hi. Good evening. I am Gene King, but I'm going to be reading something that Lee Yonker wrote, but he couldn't be here tonight. Okay. He said, "In workshops, letters, comments, and public meetings, polls in the November election, Livermore citizens sent very clear signals about their views of proposed development on the 8-acre site in downtown Livermore. With their interest and participation in workshops and council meetings, they repeatedly showed that they cared deeply about the process and the project. It is clear that Livermore citizens are proud of their downtown and would like to see a development plan that continues to build on the success of the downtown revitalization, one that gives Livermore a distinctive and unique heart. One overreaching conclusion of virtually everyone is that the development undertaken on the 8-acre site needs to be planned with and coordinated with adjacent parcels surrounding the site. The challenge is to find a process that blends the elements and the views into a plan with broad support. The city council began such a process by forming a downtown development steering committee with representatives from groups with different views, perspectives, and priorities. This is fundamentally a good approach, but recent discussions have revealed a serious issue, one that could undermine the process and lead to a far less unsatisfactory result. Some have suggested that perhaps one of the options for consideration should be an incomplete plan, one that focuses strictly on one element, the hotel, and leaves the rest of the plan to be determined later. There are many reasons why proceeding with an incomplete plan is a mistake. The community would miss the unique opportunity to plan a fully integrated project in the center of downtown, balancing views and finding common ground. All elements considered in the planning are interrelated and they should not be considered or evaluated in isolation. As an example, a vibrant town square, the highest priority of the community, needs to be carefully planned around other elements of the project. A town square needs to be activated and energized by the array of elements around it. A carefully designed wine country hotel, restaurants, retail, and perhaps residential units could be combined in a way to activate and support a healthy and distinctive town square. An early decision to build a hotel on either side of Livermore Avenue without considering the complete project could very well preclude the opportunity to have this type of town square as an integral centerpiece of the project. The entire site needs to be fully planned and evaluated with respect to the convenience and adequacy of parking, as well as the overall impact of the development on downtown traffic flow. The steering committee needs to continue and finish the task, but the committee chairs need to ensure that all options brought to the community for input and ideas must be fully integrated plans across the entire site. If there is a need to make an early decision on the hotel and its location, that decision must be based on comparing a complete site plan, no matter which side the hotel is on, not an isolated comparison of hotels." I'd just add, I like the idea of making the whole plan as Mr. Warner said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Carol Walrath, William Dunlop, and Jan Bravant.
Hello. So, I basically have the same, the same thing. I've been reading letters to the, in The Independent and all of this, I was thinking, as opinionated as I am, that I should probably be here to speak up. So, we have this opportunity to create a fantastic downtown as a whole, including a hotel, parking, open spaces, and housing. And I've worked on enough projects myself where I've made big mistakes, starting too soon, changing things around. And basically, I hope that we can get various opinions of downtown so that we can work it all out. Thank you.
Thank you. William Dunlop, Jan Bravant, Rochelle Snedecor.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here again. I've had about two months of travel, visitors, and vacation.
Welcome back.
That part I enjoyed. So, I haven't been able to follow this much, but early on, there was a sense that we were going to proceed with basically doing A, then B, and so on, and I viewed this as a very difficult approach to doing this project because my experience has been that if you have a big, big project, you have to solve all the problems and make sure all the parts work together. So, I was very pleased to hear the presentation today. It sounds like people really are looking at the full project, the implications of making choices, and will have to make some. So, I'm pleased that the current approach appears to be an integrated approach that looks at all... So with that, I encourage everyone to continue following the meetings that will happen and express their views as to what they would like to see in the downtown, because this is a very important issue and a very important thing for the development of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Jan Bravant, Rochelle Snitcore, Jeff Caskey.
Hello. My name is Jan Bravant, and I live on Tahoe Drive in Livermore, and I'm here to pretty much say the same thing that the last three people said. I think for a good completion and everything to flow nicely, that we really need to wait until everything has been decided, you know, not have to start it all at the same time, but everything is decided and planned where it's going to be, and then take one project at a time. The other thing with the hotel on the east side, my understanding is if you're coming in from the freeway, you will not be able to turn left into the hotel, that you'll have to go around Railroad Avenue, and then by the theater, First Street, and come back up so you can turn, right turn. I don't know if they've been able to work that around, but that's what I heard early. I think that's not going to be -- it's not going to help the traffic for sure. It's going to make the traffic worse, and I don't think it's a good first experience of seeing a hotel, trying to get into a hotel and find out you have to loop around a slow-moving block. That's it.
Thank you. Rochelle Snitcore and Jeff Caskey.
Hello. This is a very exciting time for us, obviously. After 17 years of hearing about the hotel coming to downtown and being a part of the downtown revitalization efforts, we feel like we're getting definitely closer. I want to thank our city council. This has been a phenomenal -- I'm on the steering committee representing Livermore downtown. It's been a great process. I think you need to feel confident that you have brought true experts in, folks that have done a career path, they have experience, they're bringing us real facts, and that's something that we've been asking for for quite some time, is give us the facts. Sometimes I think of that movie in my head where Tom Cruise is saying to Jack Nicholson, you know, "Just tell us the truth." And he's like, "You can't handle the truth. We can handle the truth." And I think it's just being able and being willing to listen to it. You are on the right path in so many ways when we're looking at working with National Main Street, National Trust for Historic Preservation, and I think this was really fitting, an email I got today from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Over the last year, they've been celebrating 50th anniversary of the National Historic Preservation Act. There's been meetings, symposiums, professional preservationists and allies getting together and really giving feedback, discussing the opportunities, the challenges that are facing community preservation. Our culture is changing. Our communities, our nation is changing and evolving. So emerging from this unified vision direction, people -- we came up with three key concepts as we've been putting this information to them. People are the reason we do what we do. People-centered preservation movement hears, understands, and honors the full diversity of the ever-evolving American story. People-centered preservation movement creates and nurtures more equitable, healthy, resilient, vibrant, and sustainable communities. People-centered preservation movement collaborates with new and existing partners and addresses social issues and makes the world a better place. I'm not going to say that building the hotel right now is going to make the world a better place, but I can tell you right now, it's going to make Livermore a better place. We knew that parcel was the right parcel for it. We can have time to figure out the other piece across the street and get the community the opportunity to really make that amazing, but a hotel ready to go is amazing for Livermore. And we've brought up Monterey and things that have gone on, and just so you know, Rick Johnson, who's the executive director for old Monterey downtown, was at our conference. We hosted California Main Street back in 2015, and he was at our conference. And as we were touring downtown, we were showing, you know, "We're going to have a hotel here, next to our bankhead theater, surrounded by amenities for luxury travelers. You'll have Uncle U's across on one side, all of these great amenities." And he was saying, "Yeah, I mean, gosh, you guys, you need to get moving on this." So this year, he hosted the California Main Street Alliance. So we were touring their new facilities and their hotel and their conference centers, and he was asking, "Hey, Rochelle, how close are you guys getting?" I said, "Well, we have a hotel here, we have, you know, some, you know, great..." He goes, "And you have that parcel." And I said, "Yep, I mean, you know, we're just working on some community involvement." So he had his -- this to say to you up there. Please don't build it. Monterey doesn't want the competition.
Jeff Caskey.
Good evening. Also, on the planning -- on the downtown steering commission and committee, and delighted that it's going well. You've heard a lot that I don't need to say again. I will say, obviously, we are collecting a lot of facts. We have to be very careful about how we do outreach. Message is important. The difference between saying that the downtown costs us $40,000 a year, or it costs us $5 a person a year, is the same fact given as a different message, and I think that we just -- one of the things that we have to be careful of in our outreach is how we couch the message to people. I'd like to suggest we do have -- this is going very well. It is a little draining to the process, but I really appreciate being part of the process, and I appreciate that Livermore is doing it. I'd like to suggest, if possible, one more meeting for the downtown steering committee during July. There's a whole month from the last meeting to before it comes to the -- before it comes to the council, a -- something like the second weekend of July, a second week of July would be possible. We haven't really talked about traffic. We've talked about traffic around the parking garage, but we haven't really talked about the impacts of traffic on the different scenarios for either side. I think that would be very important to talk about. I'll note that I know that I'm very interested in having a hotel downtown, but I think what the public asked for was not a great hotel. They asked for a great downtown with a hotel, and I think it's our job to make sure that in the end, we deliver them a great downtown with a hotel. Once we have that plan, we've got it consolidated down to a single plan through the public process. I expect that the public is going to push to begin very quickly on that. In order to do that, the city needs to start working now to prepare for the parking impacts. If a hotel is to be constructed quickly, we will lose parking during the construction long before the High Street Garage project can purchase land, move the businesses, and then complete the construction. But never waste a good crisis. This is good news, because it presents the perfect opportunity for council to implement the low-cost, high-value parking improvements that were recommended in its 2014 parking study. Among the bullets were to negotiate with the owners of private parking lots downtown to allow them to be used for public spaces. According to the survey that we saw here, there are over 1,000 spaces in downtown that are not being used in the evenings when the businesses are closed, but could be made available with appropriate negotiation. I'm not suggesting we'll get all 1,000, but if we got half of that, you've really saved a whole bunch of money and increased the parking supply very nicely without -- before you knock down a single brick. We can standardize our parking time limits, then enforce them to nudge along those who park all day long downtown. Again, it doesn't require a single bulldozer, and we can take care of that pretty quickly. There are also things like adding wayfinding so people feel like they can get to their parking. In addition, because all this is going to be happening at various times of the project, we can make temporary use of a number of the spots, adjacent lots, to the super block downtown. For instance, once the depot moves, we'll have that space where we can park, we'll have the Speedy Lube, the Bothwell Annex, and even the Swenson Annex across Railroad Avenue. A lot of places where we can park people, where we can move this process along quickly and allow the hotel to happen once we have a full plan for what that downtown, that great downtown is going to look like. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey. Okay, that's all the cards that I have. So I'm going to close the comment period and bring that back to the council. Councilor Coomer?
I'm going to defer to...
Okay.
I'll follow up later.
All right. So defer to...
I think you've already -- do you have anything else? We'll defer to each other all night here. No, no, no. I do want to thank all of the steering committee members for the time that they spent on this. I'm glad to see that everybody is still, I think, whole at this point, and also staff for putting this together and organizing everything. I think the direction is great. I agree, and this is part of the issue right now. I think all the comments tonight were great. I, you know, I feel that we should have maybe even called the committee the fact-finding committee as well, because I think a few speakers tonight mentioned finding out the facts of the situation, and that's going to help us steer -- there you go, now it's a steering committee -- steer the direction of the overall project. So I do like that we're starting to get some of the facts together. I just hope we can agree on the facts in the coming months, because there are interpretations, and I know people, you know, tend to see things a little different, but, you know, coming to a consensus on the facts, I think, will be key. Regarding Councilmember Warner's suggestion about the tools from staff, I do agree with developing a list of tools as a council that we can use to assure people that we're not talking about 500 units on the west side, 400 units, so 300 units, whatever that is. Just how we go about that, is it zoning? I don't know how we assure the community, because that's one of the potential problems that I see. You know, there are some people that are still afraid that, you know, if a hotel goes on the east side, the west side is going to be nothing but a super block of 500 units, and I don't support that in any way, shape, or form. I can't see myself being convinced of that number of units. It's a huge impact in the downtown. How do we assure the public that that's not the direction that we're going? So I do agree with bringing forward just the suite of tools to discuss that, and that's one of the things that I want to emphasize at this point. We are discussing everything. We are not trying to make decisions right now. We -- that's the purpose of the committee, is to go out and develop a process so we can hear back from the community and come to a decision around the October, November-ish timeframe. So if I'm throwing out two hotels and, I don't know, a water park or something, I'm just throwing out ideas at this point. You know, so I'm joking, of course, the water park, please. I just realized my mistake, that could take off. But I think it is full of potential and opportunities, and we do need to look at the side as a whole and just get that community impact. So everybody's right at this point. There are no bad ideas, except for the water park. But anyway, with that, I'll stop.
Okay. One thing I want to say is that maybe we're just agreeing with each other tonight, but your idea of maybe reserving some land is interesting. And I think that, though the conversation said that you can't reserve it forever, and it has some maybe drawbacks, and when I'm talking about tools for limiting the housing, I mean just nailing it down, because it's, as we've seen, this, so far, we've been into this for, what, eight years, with how many different councils? So these tools have got to really lock in the future councils as well, possibly, and we have to think about it. Because as much as I want to get going, I've seen what this -- the issues are there, I believe the facts are compelling, but, and we've heard that the outside experts that don't have any axe to grind have agreed on what the basic facts are, it's inside that we're going to get a little bit twisted possibly. So we need to -- we need to figure out a way to get to consensus as best we can, but we're not going to get 100% agreement, but in as a safety measure, and as I said, to allow the community some other options where we don't have to do everything all at once, because it's very expensive and very disruptive. So if there's some way that we can know what we're going to do, but stage it, that's extremely important in my mind. So that's the reason I'm advocating that we come back with the tools that allow a measured, disciplined staging that makes sense to occur, rather than say, "Oh, we got to do it all or nothing."
Rather brief, since most of what's been -- I could say has been said, and thank you both for expressing some good thoughts there that I can hopefully build on here. But I remember back at our Goals and Priorities workshop earlier in this year, I think I was one of the few council members who thought, when we were deciding how to prioritize the downtown, that I saw it as an all-inclusive, you know, let's just figure out where we're going with the whole matter now, so we don't end up with a Tucker torpedo somewhere down the line, you know, it's a Corvair again or something. So we have -- all the pieces are in place that need to go there, and this steering committee has done a really, really, really good job of finding out where we need to go, what facts we need to have, digging to where the facts need, you know, finding out where we're going to have to be going with this, that it isn't going to be necessarily what our individual nirvana's envisioned. So we're going to have a lot of -- the good thing about the steering committee, we have a lot of voices that sometimes agree, sometimes not so much, and that they've been able to come to some real -- while consensus is too strong a word, some real good agreements along the way has been gratifying to me to see, because that's kind of what I hoped for too, because this is going to be a daunting process. It's going to have to happen, though, and we're going to stop letting it drift farther down the road and with different elements entering as we go along. And that's hopefully what we can move forward at this point, and as the Council -- Vice Mayor Spodowski and I are part of the finance subcommittee, and we know that there are facts there too that will be presented shortly, that, you know, make some things more feasible than I thought they would have been a year and a half ago. But that won't have me abandoning some of my thoughts too, which most of you are well aware of. But I was pleased to see, and I like the idea of getting it together as a single idea rather than -- and putting it together in stages. That's a great way to plan it. You can't possibly do such a -- have such a project, but at least you know what the project's going to be. At least you know what it's going to look like when it's done. We'll be able to decide on that, and I am just so appreciative of the work that the steering committee has done, and this is a great example of how much time they spent with this, and thank you, David, for helping to lead them that way, too. Thanks.
I can say one thing is that...
I'm not done yet either, so...
Okay. So one of the things that I took from Vice Mayor Spodowski's suggestion is that maybe the way to do this is say, "We have a couple of alternatives that we're certain of." And for instance, I don't know if a second hotel is feasible, but you have to -- you would have to wait a certain period of time. I mean, you could say is, you know, in the latter stages, that parcel is one where the second hotel could go, but if it doesn't, then this is what goes there instead. So it's a way to have comprehensive and know where you're going, but not absolutely. So I mean, there's some -- this is a complicated, very complicated process, a lot of moving parts, and complete precision, you know, that's hard to get to and alignment. So some flexibility might be in it. One of the things, it was the comment that we haven't studied traffic or parking sufficiently. I'm not sure that's true, and I would ask David and maybe staff if there's -- if that is a concern, and do we need to go back and drill down further?
Well, if I could just speak to -- because one of my comments speaks to what you're talking about, and again, I'm -- as a scientist, it's difficult for me to talk about what facts are real and which ones aren't, and, you know, how do you determine what the facts are?
Oh, but as a politician, you can get used to...
The facts are. You know, as a scientist, as a chemist, the facts are. That's what they are. But we've heard folks saying, "Oh, you can't have the hotel smashed up against the bankhead," even though the last two hotels we've talked about and considered were in that place, because there's no view. And the valet parking is problematic, but I just flew in from Philadelphia, and I was at the Philadelphia Marriott, ironically enough, and my room was about 10 feet from an occupied office building. However, they just made the windows opaque, so there was no view. It was just sort of a white frosted window. There was no view. And the gym, however, you could actually see the people working in their offices, you know, looking at you working out. Place was packed. It's all valet parked. There isn't a blade of grass anywhere around the place. I'm not saying that's what we want, but it's a very successful hotel in the middle of downtown. The -- apparently, it sort of troubles me that members of the committee were talking about the priorities. Well, it was the council that made the priority to consider the hotel and parking first. That was council direction. We heard that confirmed tonight from Mr. Stewart. That was the council direction. So maybe if they want the council to reconsider that, we can do that, but what we heard loud and clear was that the community wanted parking first and foremost. They want that solved. That was council direction, we heard that confirmed tonight from Mr. Stewart. That was the council direction. So maybe if they want the council to reconsider that, we can do that. But what we heard loud and clear was that the community wanted parking first and foremost. They want that solved. And of course, the parking in the hotel have a synergistic impact. So now we're hearing, well, let's plan the whole thing. Let's have this wonderful town square that's all planned and is fully baked when we deliver it. And one of the speakers tonight said, well, this is the way you should do it, with a very large, complicated project, plan everything before you finish. Well, it's curious, because the National Ignition Facility is a very complicated project, and they have been solving critical physics problems every step of the way. They're still doing that. And they knew that before they laid the first brick on that place, that there are issues to solve. Now, to say that we're going to deliver this fully baked process all at once, it took Cleveland, and Cleveland has been brought up as an example many times, about a wonderful town square. It took 17 years to plan that. This community made it very clear that they do not want to wait 17 years for us to solve the parking in the downtown. They want that solved now, immediately. And so those are the priorities that we have to deal with. Financing, of course, is critical, and that's why we have a finance committee here to start working that out. But this community does not want to wait 17 years to figure out this whole plan. We wanted to get the parking solved, and I keep hearing this fact repeated over and over again, that all the traffic is going to come down from the north and is going to have to turn left into the hotel. Well, what about all the people that are in the wine region, that are going to be coming from the weddings in the wine region, and then coming, driving to the north? And if the hotel is on the east side, they'll turn right into the hotel. If the hotel's on the left side, then they'll have to turn left and they'll be blocking traffic as they're coming up from the wine region, or if they're coming up from San Jose. So it goes both ways. The fact is, is we've got very smart traffic engineers to figure these sort of details out. They're not only coming from the north or only coming from the south. That's why it's difficult to do everything at once. We heard it mentioned that if the residential is put next to a hotel, well, it diminishes both projects, is what some of the experts have said. We also heard from some experts to say, yeah, we can make that work. But to plan this whole thing at once is not meeting what the community wants. The community wants traffic solved first, foremost. There are issues around the parking and the hotel. The council made the direction to consider those two first, because that's what we heard from the community that they wanted. Councilmember Warner mentioned that we've been working on this eight years. Well, the reason we've been working on it for eight years is because six years ago, we heard from the community that they wanted 400 housing units on the site, and a 2,000-seat regional theater. But parking wasn't, and traffic didn't seem to be as much of a concern then, as it is the traffic around 135-room hotel. So the community has changed its mind, we're trying to work out all the details to find out how we can meet what the community wants. And that's why the outreach, not advocacy, but outreach, is going to be so important as we take this back out into the community. With this outreach, not advocacy, we want that community input, to find out what the community wants, and what will actually work. We want a hotel that is successful. And we've heard issues on both sides. We want a successful hotel, and we want a successful downtown, and that all has to work together. So with that, I look forward to this outreach program coming back, because that's going to be absolutely key, to find out how we make this work. I think the council was correct in its original direction, to solve those two problems first, because then we can start dealing with the other open space components, the residential components. We are very clearly, the community, at least the ones that we heard from, don't want residential in the downtown. We've seen in these plans that that's an essential component. We've got to reconcile that. And the outreach to the community is going to be absolutely critical. And how we, how do we ensure that it is community outreach, broad-based outreach? And I think that's going to be absolutely critical. And that's what the steering committee is going to be bringing back, I look forward to that.
So a couple of things, though, I want to make sure we close on the, two items. One is the request, or the proposal I made for the staff to come out, come back with the tools kit, for us to limit the amount of housing once it's aligned on through the outreach thing. Now, how do I make that happen? Just make a motion, or how do I have to get this done?
So the issue there would be, assuming that we've sort of switched to a direction to staff point here, we don't need a formal motion, but I would like to sort of see at least three of you concur that you'd like to, when we present the report at the end of July to you, that a portion of that report actually specifically discussed tools that could limit a number of units, location and/or both of those, what their adoption mechanism would be, and essentially what the implications of those tools would be. Is that, if that is something the council would like to see, I saw kind of one and a half...
One of the issues behind that also is, a very important component is the financial component. And Councilmember Warner briefly addressed that, with the 175 units and $80,000 subsidies. So we have to make sure that when those tools are brought forward, that the council has a firm understanding of what the costs and/or subsidies may be required.
My understanding of the request is that it actually would be an exploration of the tools, not a proposal to actually implement the tools. That would be later council direction that would happen after outreach. So let me see if I spit it back and understand what, so we have a common understanding is that this would be an exploration of what the various tools, some were alluded to, changes in the specific plan, other items that could specify either a location and/or a maximum number of units, just the tools themselves, and how they might be adopted, and what their force of law would be, would be brought forward after the outreach process. And you have a plan or plans in front of you with the feedback from the public, then you would give direction on, you know, how to actually, or if you'd like to utilize any of those tools.
And the purpose of the tools is just to let the community know...
That they exist and how they'd work.
That they exist, that they could work, and that we can, as a community, make a statement that will stick as to the housing down there. Because it's been this political football, and people have used the housing for various purposes over the years, depending on what kind of point of view they want to get going here. So what I want to do is take the fear of the stack and pack away.
So the tools that the council would employ to provide the community the assurances that this is not going to become stack and pack?
Right. You know, we don't want to be the, we don't want the east end of the valley to look like some other end of the valley, so...
Yeah, so tools to provide the assurances.
Right. I mean, that's the point. Because, and frankly, I've heard people raise the concern, oh my gosh, if you do this, then we'll end up like that. And I don't think that's true. And the purpose of these tools is to assure the community that in fact, we won't go there. And in such a way that it isn't just us, but it's, in the future too, if possible. Because it may be that this doesn't get done with this council, or even the next. So we've got to, I don't want that to happen, but, you know, there's a chance, really. So, and so do we have the three head nods? Did you get three? I'm nodding.
I'm nodding. Okay.
Yeah, I think Mr. Roberts summarized it perfectly. We are not, and again, I want to stress, we're not deciding on any feature, number of units, anything at this point. So it's merely the...
I think we've got to four, so if we stop now, we know where we're going.
We're not going to get a fifth.
Okay. So there's one other topic, and it does pertain to the steering committee, was the question I asked, that was, you know, we heard that we haven't maybe addressed the traffic and parking adequately. Is that the opinion of our consultant and staff? If so, what are we going to do about it?
Well, one of the things, maybe, the information that was presented, certainly, as you'll recall, in downtown, we did take the grid pattern that ran throughout downtown. We did provide you information on three different time periods. One was before we redid First Street, one immediately following when we did the renovation of First Street, essentially approximately 15 years ago, and one very recently. And those, that information from throughout the downtown at key intersections was presented to the committee. The committee has not seen essentially a specific analysis of either a specific project or combination of projects from that perspective. One of the things that we noted, however, was that as the alternatives were actually built, we would complete that analysis, and that analysis would be presented to council. So that is certainly currently what we are planning to do as far as further analysis. But the overall downtown, of course, was analyzed, it was analyzed in several different ways, and those were recent analysis. Those actually fall into line fairly closely with what we anticipated when we did the 2003 downtown specific plan update, and that actually did a build-out analysis as well. And the intersections that are showing up are the ones that that model predicted as well. So the areas, part of the nuance to this, which is a little difficult, is that once you identify those two key intersections, then of course, what you'd do is you'd send your traffic engineers back to actually look at signal timing. You would look at platooning or coordinating signals in a predominant direction. Those are very specific tools that would actually be very far down the process. The other thing you'd do is to literally start looking at, you know, driveway locations, service locations, those sorts of things, which come, generally come forward later in a project development. So I would say, we have a very good overall understanding, but we are not yet to the level of project details where we would develop further. If the, for example, steering committee wanted an example, for example, what would have happened to traffic levels if we'd have built out the project that was turned in with Lennar and Presidio originally? We can give that snapshot. It's not terribly informative, I mean, it does exactly what you'd think, it loads traffic around the site.
So here's what I'm trying to get at. We've heard the same person who said we don't have enough information on traffic and parking is also an advocate for a specific plan at this point. So I'm a little confused, we either do or we don't have enough information in order to start the option building process. So my question is very straightforward. Are we ready to start the scenario building process, or do we need to drill down more on traffic? Because frankly, having that kind of statement out there is going to undermine what we do.
Councilmember Warner, I believe your professional staff would say, yes, you have the information necessary to begin your scenario building. David, other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, I absolutely agree with Mark. It is a kind of chicken and egg problem, you can't really do an analysis of specific traffic issues until you have one or several alternatives to evaluate. And so we have tried to give the committee some generalized information about the traffic impacts that result from each individual use, that's been presented to them. Based on that, we feel that it will be possible to go forward and build some alternatives. And as Mark already said, we will be giving evaluation of those alternatives for traffic and for other issues, fiscal, economic viability and so forth. Those evaluations will be done and can only be done after the alternatives are built. So I think, yes, the committee is ready to start alternatives building. The one caveat I would say, and Mark already mentioned this, is that if desired, we could give, we could evaluate a past alternative. For instance, we could look at what would have happened had the Lennar and Presidio alternatives been developed. Of course, that won't happen today, but it gives some ballpark idea, if you did X, you get this result. And staff is able to present that even in the next few days, if the committee desires that. I certainly think with that information, we'll have done everything we possibly could until such time as actual alternatives are developed. And then, once those are developed, as Mark has said, we will be showing evaluations of what would happen under those alternatives.
Okay, thank you. And then the last suggestion was that we add an additional meeting. How do we handle that? A question, I mean, not...
So the council has set a very specific schedule, you've amended that once. We did look at meetings in the first half of July, and it was difficult to get a majority of the committee members there, while I believe the committee enjoys meeting enormously. And we've tried really hard to make the meetings quite informative and interesting. At this point, that is not part of the schedule, and your staff, I think, and consultant team believe that we can accomplish the task that you set us out to do with this process in the meetings that we have. You know, as the committee will tell you, we're covering a lot of information. But part of that is, we really are providing an extraordinary amount of information to the committee before we've even asked them to begin their process. So I think you've got an appropriate number of meetings at this point. Obviously, if that changes in the next few weeks, you've got a very dynamic chair and vice chair of that committee, they ultimately could bring that question back to you, that would need to be something that the council itself would change.
One last comment, something during the traffic discussion. I would like to know, maybe our city engineer already knows this, do we have current and/or, well, recent traffic counts of the turning movements going into the, quote, you know, Jiffy Lube site, and also the west site as well? You know, in between, you know, just past Uncle Hughes. So mid-block on North Livermore.
Yes, we do.
And how current are they?
Within the last month.
Within the last month. So we do have the traffic turning patterns, because, you know, thinking about both sites, we may have a pretty good feel as to what that, what that feels like on both sites right now. In particular, the, what is it, 68 lot site, or 68 spot next to the bankhead?
Next to the bankhead. So we have both the movements into the fat lot and into Livermore Village. So that whole mid-block area, we have traffic counts on.
Because after, you know, discussing this and driving that area, you do have people already now making that left-hand turn movement. And you also have, and I don't know, just spitballing it here, but you may have the worst situation of people who are going in, circling and waiting and backing up traffic because they're hopeful for that one spot to open up. The guy jiggling his keys at his door to go grab his jacket and then leave, you just waited five minutes for that spot that never opened up. So I don't know if we have a good feel for what traffic would be like on either site at this point, but it'd be interesting to see that data at some point.
We have it and will present it.
Well, and I think in comparison, where you're going, is in comparison to the projected traffic levels of the change in the development. It may not be more.
Right, right.
Okay, any further comments or direction, information you need?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to 6.02, the framework for the development of the City of Livermore's Green Infrastructure Plan. Thank you, Mr. Early. Thank you, Stuart. Sorry, nine o'clock, we blew right by that. Okay, we're going to take a short break, back here in about five minutes. All right, great. Welcome back to the July 12th meeting of the Livermore City Council. We're up to item 6.02, the framework for the development of the city's green infrastructure plan. Sherry Sheets and Joel Waxdeck.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm just here to introduce our senior engineer, Joel Waxdeck, who's going to provide you with the information today and the report for green infrastructure.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm going to provide you with the quick overview of the green infrastructure requirements in the city's stormwater permit. This will provide background information for tonight's item to approve a framework for the development of a green infrastructure plan. The city's municipal regional stormwater permit was reissued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board in November 2015. This permit allows discharge from the city's stormwater system to the creeks and bay. It covers 76 permities in the San Francisco Bay region, including all municipalities in Alameda, Contra Costa, San Mateo, and Santa Clara counties. The 2015 permit includes mandatory trash reduction levels for stormwater runoff, and also requires all permities to develop a green infrastructure plan to reduce the water quality impacts of urbanization and specifically... These pollutants have been determined to be impairing the water quality of stormwater discharge into the San Francisco Bay area and currently exceed the allowable total maximum daily load as determined by the water board. Green infrastructure is a sustainable system that slows runoff by dispersing it to vegetated areas, promotes infiltration and evapotranspiration, and uses bioretention and other low-impact development practices to clean stormwater runoff. Examples are rain gardens and bioretention, flow-through planters, tree well filters, pervious paving, green roofs, and rainwater harvest. The picture shown is of a rain garden in Emeryville. The purpose of green infrastructure plan is to guide the identification, prioritization, implementation, tracking, and reporting of green infrastructure projects and identify green infrastructure implementation targets for 2020 and 2040 for mercury and PCB load Green infrastructure compliance includes continuing to require stormwater treatment for developments with greater than 10,000 square feet of impervious area, encouraging green infrastructure stormwater treatment for projects with less than 10,000 square feet of impervious area, updating planning documents, standard details and specifications to include green infrastructure requirements, and identifying and prioritizing funding options for public green infrastructure projects. The regional board has calculated the following pollutant load reductions for the city of Livermore. PCB reductions of 2 grams a year and mercury reductions of 1 gram a year by 2020, and PCB reductions of 47 grams a year and mercury reductions of 159 grams a year by 2040. In order to achieve these goals, stormwater runoff from 22.6 acres of old industrial areas needs to be treated by 2020, and runoff from around 565 acres of old industrial needs to be treated by 2040. Old urban areas can also be treated, however, three times more area would need to be treated in order to achieve the same pollutant reductions. The city can also take credit for old industrial and old urban areas that have been, have added stormwater treatment since 2002. The first required item for green infrastructure compliance is to adopt a framework for the plan. The framework for the green infrastructure plan is being proposed for approval tonight contains the following elements. The framework states the purpose of the green infrastructure plan and lists green infrastructure permit deadlines. It also outlines the steps that need to be taken to complete the plan and provides a framework, timeframe for plan development, and identifies required staffing and budget to develop the plan. The city has programmed $250,000 in the engineering work program to develop the plan. These are the steps and schedule provided in the framework. Some of the steps include identifying green infrastructure projects, updating planning and design documents, evaluating funding sources, and training and outreach. With regards to funding, implementation of the green infrastructure plan constitutes an unfunded state mandate. Based on pilot projects, conversion of existing streets to green infrastructure ranges from 250,000 to 350,000 per acre treated. However, there may be some more cost-effective alternatives where open space exists downstream of old industrial areas. Cost estimates will be developed as the program moves forward. Key tasks include approving the framework by June 30, 2017, completing the green infrastructure plan and submitting to the regional board by September 30, 2019, and also by September 30, 2019, adopting an ordinance to ensure implementation of the plan. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving the city of Livermore's framework for the development of a green infrastructure plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waxtek. Questions? This is what you do.
This is what I'll be doing tomorrow night at another council meeting, and I'm not joking.
Can we just photocopy yours?
Yeah, I think they did photocopy mine. No. A couple of questions. So in Alameda County, they're dividing the PCB loads among all cities. Is there any opportunity whatsoever to at least consider possibly partnering countywide on a, you know, kind of a super site project in Oakland, or, not to say that Oakland, you know, but they have a lot of old industrial, something where we can kind of get more bang for our buck?
Absolutely, yeah. It can be, as long as you meet the overall load reduction, the county can do it in a couple of cities and big projects.
I just didn't know if Alameda County was like, eh, everybody to each their own, you all have to treat your own. Because what's concerning for me is that I'm happy right now with the current C3 model of treating stormwater runoff. And what we currently do is, you know, when a new development comes in or something is redevelopment, redeveloped and meets certain criteria, that's when we treat the stormwater runoff and disconnect it from the system. Because what the regional board's doing is they want us to eventually disconnect our storm drain systems, essentially, so there's as much infiltration and evapotranspiration as possible before it reaches the creeks.
And we're flooding.
Well, yeah, there's, there's, there's design in these, you know, items where there's all, you know, there's overflows with the inlets for the 100-year and 50-year storm. But my concern is, is that through the GI plans, we're going to be identifying potential projects. And then I'm starting to sniff out future permits where they say, well, by the way, you identified potential projects, we want you to implement 10% of them during this permit term. And at 250 to 300 K per acre, that's very expensive. And what I don't think they realize is that, you know, the current C3 model, you're taking advantage of the construction cycle. Whereas this is looking at actively digging up sites that aren't under construction, and you're not really thinking about the right-of-way that you need, nor the, well, not just the surface right-of-way, but when you start digging down and hitting all the utilities and moving utilities. So I don't disagree with this approach, but I think that there needs to be a realization that this might not be a 20, 30, 50-year plan. It may be 100, 150, 200-year plan. You know, we're, it's great to incorporate it into our design standards and do it where we can. And there, I think there are instances, possibly, but at least in my experience, where you could look at a curb cut here or some, you know, pervious pavement there and actually create a pretty cost-effective GI project. But, you know, it's just, I'm really concerned that there's not the realization that we don't have the funding, you know, at 300 K per acre or 250 K per acre. And there, it's tied to, we have to do this to meet our PCB requirement reduction. So that with the building demolition, that's going to be interesting as well, because we're all going to have to come up with ordinances for PCBs during building demolition, which is usually handled by the state. So anyway, I'll stop here. I could probably go till midnight. I'm not planning to tomorrow night, but yeah, I think it's a, it's, it's good that we're adopting the framework and starting to think about it. .33 FTEs total, is that basically for CIP review in this plan, or?
That's entirely to develop the plan, so it's partly CIP, partly planners.
Okay, and will that, I guess that's including the annual, because we have to review the CIP on an annual basis, so.
Correct.
Okay.
And that was the amount of money simply to do the green infrastructure plan, develop the green infrastructure plan.
Okay, and then Alameda County is, are they hopefully developing some of the aspects of a plan? So here's a standardized design standard, we're not doing any of that. It's mainly the writing the plan and implementation of. And then also, are we, we're not looking at opening up specific plans to include the language, are we? Or is it just, because if, I don't know if we've considered, if we add it to the general plan, all specific plans must find consistency with the general plan. I don't know if that's kind of an end-around to opening up specific plans, but.
They are asking that we consider incorporating in, not just in our general plan, but also in specific plans. But we will have an opportunity to evaluate that and determine where it's appropriate and where it's not.
Because I'm fine with future-specific plans and referencing maybe general plan language that states will comply with GI, but I'm a little leery about opening up any existing plans, because that's a whole other can of worms in terms of public noticing and all the work involved. And I would also encourage that, you know, any specific plan, just generally refer to the general plan, and we make it as general as possible so we don't have to keep going back and revising this during future permits. So anyway, that's it, in a nutshell.
Is there, is there actually data that supports the hypothesis that the suggestions will actually remove PCBs in Livermore, for example, in the proposed amounts? Like, if we do all of this, is there data that shows that if you do this, you will actually be removing PCBs in that amount?
Kind of on an average basis, they went and they sampled a bunch of sites of different types of land use to get an idea of the PCB and the mercury concentration in the soils, and then they did the science of transport.
Not generally.
Yeah, on an average basis, they expect if this is done, that they will get the load reductions. In certain areas, it might not, you know, because you might have areas that are shown.
This is what they hope.
Yeah. Well, I think statistically, it's kind of a big statistical thing, to be honest.
Which is going to cost us a whole boatload of money. And as Councilmember Warner says, hope is not a strategy. Can the city recoup some of these costs by collecting a fee from companies that have used PCBs, have used PCBs, or have used mercury?
Since this is an unfunded mandate, we'll be exploring all options. None are clearly defined at this point, but if there's an opportunity, we will pursue it.
Okay. Where's a buck to be had? Okay. All right, any other questions? I have a speaker card, John Stein, up in the comment period.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court, in line with Councilmember Spodofsky's comments. I was wondering about the magnitude of the, a street mitigation. It said 250 to 350,000 dollars per acre. I was wondering how many acres of existing street we have in the city. I think that's important to understand. Also, I was wondering on retention basins, would there be any additional costs involved in using them as community gardens during the summer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Any comment back from staff?
Sorry. So with respect to the number of acres you have to treat, it's based on your industrial acres of land, not on your, the acreage of your streets. If you're not treating the land directly, then you can get credit by treating through streets. It's, it's, but there's no direct correlation to how many streets you have to implement green infrastructure on. And number two, the retention basins and using them for community gardens, there may be some possibilities for doing that. The current ones we have have environmentally sensitive lands surrounding them, so they're not great candidates for that right now, but there may be new ones that we'll be putting in that that may make sense for.
And page 258, it says that if state legislation passes, the city may have the opportunity to implement a new funding source with voter approval. What if the voters don't approve it? We have to pull that out of the general fund, which normally funds police, fire, public safety, public works. Okay. Go for the fee. All right. Any further comments from the council?
It's welcome to the wonderful world of the TMDL at this point. This is our first numeric limit that we're dealing with, if I recall from permits, so.
Well, it used to be TMDLs were based on what you discharged. This is a hypothetical, which you may prevent being discharged if you go through all these very expensive.
Right.
Issues. Okay. So this is a motion to approve the framework, and it'll come back as a plan. Do you have a motion? Or, oh. Comments? Motion?
I'll move item 6.02.
Moved by the Vice Mayor.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Coumber. Any discussion? Favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposition?
16 million square feet, that's astounding.
Well, good evening again. So tonight, we're here to present an update on the asset management program development with respect to sidewalks and pedestrian access ramps. So the city currently is home to approximately 16.2 million square feet of sidewalk with a total valuation of about $194 million. Currently, the cost to repair is shared with the adjacent property owners. Right now, the city pays 25% of the construction cost. The city's solely responsible for 156,000 square feet of sidewalk. So these are sidewalks that are either in a city facility or adjacent to a city facility. The city's also home to an estimated 8,000 pedestrian access ramps with a total valuation of approximately 48 million. Currently, California state law places the burden of maintenance for sidewalks on the adjacent property owners. The current management method for sidewalks, so the city currently administers a sidewalk repair program, which features, again, that 25% construction cost subsidy, a city-administered construction contract, so our engineering division actually goes out and bids a project to do sidewalk. And then the prioritization of that program is based on high pedestrian use and then the amount of time spent on the list. So as this program continues to go, a backlog is developed and the list gets prioritized that way. The program repairs approximately 7,500 square feet of sidewalk and 30 ramps per year with the total expenditure of about $440,000 per year. So the proposed prioritization method really is a refinement of the current method and a little more gradation. So at the high end of the prioritization method that's being proposed, we'd have the largest offsets in the largest use areas. And then, of course, at the bottom, the smallest offsets in the lower use areas. On the ramp side, the highest priority would be non-existent ramps where there is a high demand. And then the low end would be ramps that are existing but are not compliant in the areas of low demand. One change that we made from the staff report, or since the staff report's been published, was, is in the high and medium categories, adding an explicit call-out for the removal of the lips. So where a ramp is otherwise compliant but has the lip at the transition from the ramp to the street, that's a relatively minor cost related to, or compared to, the replacement of the entire ramp. So we decided to propose that that be included in the high and medium categories as well. And then there's just a caveat here that regulations currently require that ramps be upgraded to current standards when we do street maintenance projects. So those are, as we go do the more intensive street maintenance projects, we have to also bring the ramps up to snuff at that point. So our backlog for the sidewalk and ramps, we can also think of this as kind of our catch-up costs. Right now, on the sidewalk side, it's about 17.4 million, and in our current program, the city would be responsible for 4.4 million of that total. On the ramp side, 18.4 million, the total backlog of 22.8 million. If we were to just take this backlog, just the backlog, and spread it over either a 10 or 20-year period, we get a 2.3 million total per year on the 10-year period and a 1.2 million per year on the 20-year period. Now, the keep-up costs are apparently a little more manageable. Our recommended minimum level service is actually our current budget, $440,000 per year. And we believe that if we were to run a scheduled replacement for these items, that we'd be more in the $515,000 per year range. It is important to note that these annual figures don't include any of the catch-up. So this is just kind of the, if we got up to speed, how much would it cost to keep up after that? And it does not include project delivery costs. So with the different policy options that are available, we decided to look, focus on the construction cost, and then depending where the policies go, the costs may inflate from here at this point. So when we take the 10- and the 20-year backlog elimination, add in the keep-up costs, we're ranging from $2.8 million per year total budget for 10-year backlog elimination down to 1.7 million per year for 20-year backlog elimination. One of the major causes of sidewalk defects is actually trees, as probably guessed. The current tree preservation ordinance. places the burden of tree maintenance for street trees onto the private property owners. So private properties owners are given the choice, when faced with a tree-caused sidewalk problem, to either make frequent sidewalk repairs, probably in the five-to-seven-year range, or to replace the tree and do it in a, in a method that's a little more friendly to the sidewalk. Typically, when it comes to a sidewalk problem caused by a tree, if the tree is to be removed, the removal of the tree will be one of the biggest pieces of the cost involved. So just a quick summary of our initial findings. So we presented initial information on pavement, buildings, and walls, and then tonight, sidewalk and ramps. The numbers for sidewalk and ramps are just the keep-up numbers. So of course, we'd be adding anywhere from about $1 to $2 million a year, depending on how we deal with the backlog. So some of the potential policy options may be to continue the existing program as is. Unfortunately, staff does not recommend doing that. The backlog continues to grow, and it's not very efficient or effective. One option, or another option, may be to eliminate the construction subsidy. And this could take a couple different forms. One would be where the city administers a program, so the, the city still goes out, does a bid, and gets rates for the sidewalk repair, but doesn't actually contribute to the cost of the repair itself. So this would be kind of a, a program where the city could help the residents get the job done, but wouldn't necessarily be paying for the work itself. The city would, at that point, be paying just for the administration of the program. Or there could be a property own, property owner-based program, where the city's efforts, instead of being spent on bidding a project and running a project, would be spent more on notification of the property owners that they have an obligation to, to repair their sidewalks. Another option might be, and could be used in conjunction with the others, would be to shift the sidewalk liability from the city to the private property owners. And this would be accomplished by an ordinance. And one of the subset of options with that could be even an incentive program, some sort of incentive to help encourage property owners to get their sidewalks repaired in a timely fashion. If the, the liability for trip and fall claims is shifted to the private property owners, then the city's involvement at that point would be relatively minimal. And then, of course, one option on the other end of the spectrum could be the city to, with the approval of the voters, to create a new funding mechanism. And then essentially, the city takes over all the sidewalk. That would be a, a pretty big shift from the current position. So we have addressed this item to our Community Asset Management Program Committee, which, as a side note, I did want to say that they've been very invaluable for staff. Have had a lot of good feedback from different points of view. The initial feedback was that the ramps made sense to remain a city responsibility, and there were some different opinions on the sidewalk responsibility. I think it's a pretty common refrain that people want the service, but don't necessarily want to, to foot the bill. Or directly, at least. So staff will revisit this topic with camp. We'll add additional information to the discussion, and we'll continue the, the discussion with them. So just as a quick reminder, we still have quite a few systems coming up for initial findings, and then eventually for policy decisions, including storm drains, parks, pauses, landscape, traffic control, bridges, artwork, and trees. Tonight, staff is recommending that the council approve the prioritization methodology, and then also provide input on any additional policies the council would like considered, or if any of the, the policy options presented tonight should not go any further in this process. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions for staff?
Just a, a quick question. So the backlog, i- if we were to adopt a new policy and say, okay, everybody who's in the system now that reported a sidewalk lift, or whatever you want to call it, if we stop accepting new applications or new reports, is that backlog about, what, 10 years, 11 years now? At 400-something a year, and it looked like there was... It was like 4 million left?
Of the sidewalk?
Yeah, so it's about 10 years. So even if we were to slowly fade it out, the people who are on the list right now would still be 10 years without adding.
I thought it was more like 5 to 8, but yeah.
Yeah, 5 to 8, okay. I, I don't know, I just, I was just looking at the, it's getting late. I'm a little off. But that might have been with the, the increase, the 515, so. Okay, so we still have a significant backlog, no matter what direction that we take.
That's correct.
And also, I want to mention that I think, I, I don't know of a city that's not currently dealing with this issue. Because sidewalks are becoming a problem. And it's, it's usually tree versus sidewalk versus, you know, what do you want to give up versus, yeah, anyway. So, yeah, I think it's a, a complex problem, and, and I don't think I get enough chances to say this, but thank God for the camp committee. They seem to be like the little committee that could, even though they're not a little committee, they're always just chugging along, working behind the scenes. And every now and then, we get a nice pop-up of data from them and some decision points. So I really wanted to take an opportunity to thank the, the camp, and also committee and, and staff that works with them to, to deal with these pretty heavy issues. So it'll be interesting to see what recommendations they have for the sidewalk maintenance.
Thank you, and I'll pass that along.
What standard do you use to determine if your ramps are out of compliance? I, my wife's tired of hearing me complain about them, but it's, you, you notice it more in a wheelchair, believe it or not, that when, when you have a step up from a street, it's even an inch. And you, if you're not paying attention, it could send you flying. Hasn't happened to me recently. But there are several places on town. How do you, how are you prioritizing which ones are going to be the ones that you'll repair? And what do you intend to do about them? And I make reference as to what do you intend. I always refer to Pacific Grove, which are probably the best ramps in the business, I think, because they, they make an, an effort to smooth the transition period. You don't have that little uptick sometimes, that, the wheeling necessity that you need to do.
Sure.
It is kind of a good one to look at. But what do you have on that list of, and, and I guess why? Because you've changed so many. There are very few left of the old-school ramps.
Sure.
But some of those newer ones do fall into that category of still, still kind of difficult for me.
Good, but not quite there.
Yeah, almost.
So our consultant has gone out and done a condition assessment of approximately 1,000 ramps. And they're using the current ADA access guidelines, the ADA access board guidelines, for looking at the different criteria. So the, the slope of the ramp, the wings, the landing, the transition, things like that. So they've actually noted what those deficiencies are on those ramps that we've already investigated. And as far as, it's, overall, the compliance is kind of a pass/fail. It either, it either meets all the compliance criteria or it doesn't. But we have identified the, the, the lack of truncated domes, and the presence of a lip at the transition, as things that we can probably deal with, with less than full replacement. So those are identified, and that's included in that 18.4. So that 18.4, of course, is lower than the total valuation. Significantly lower, I should say, because of that.
Good, cool. Thank you.
One other question. Just, just popped up. Have we, have we ever run any street-level pictometry of the entire city? You know, measuring, I, I don't know if we've, we've run LiDAR before, but I know they're getting more and more accurate, where you can actually measure all the ramps, either via LiDAR, or they actually do it off the photos now. Somehow, it's some kind of weird system where they take the different angles of the photos and measure it. But that, that might be something. I don't know if we need that for an ADA, you know, database or whatever, but that might be something to look into. So I, I think we've, we, we have our own street level. Yeah, yeah, but I don't know if they're taking, if they're out there, or if you use a company that can run the LiDAR at the same time, that might be useful. Instead of sending a consultant out to 1,000 spots, you can have somebody drive it and take the whole thing.
Councilmember Warner?
Just a, a thought on the asset management program. Based on the, some of the earlier discussions, then what would be helpful, I think, is a projection of, you know, what's our current backlog? And of the different options, what's that backlog going to look like over time? Because what I'm very familiar with in my normal job is, as you're looking at, at work, you really have to balance what comes in every day with what goes out every day. And if you don't, then the backlog builds, and it just is inexorable. So I, sort of the bottom line for me is a graph that says, this is our backlog, and this is what it's going to do under, over time, based on our various policies for all these areas. And if we end up with, most of the important things have a growing backlog, then we know we haven't solved the problem, and we got to continue to work it, right? So a, a, a simple graph showing backlog versus time for what we are, the options we're considering, would help, I think immensely, the choices. But I doubt that we're going to have a plan that shows all the backlogs decreasing in a reasonable period of time. And we were just talking earlier about, you know, 17 years in Cleveland, and Vice Mayor Spodowsky is saying, hey, well, maybe we're looking at 100 or 200 years. So that, you know, that's not going to work. So let's just have these graphs.
With, this keeps coming up, and, you know, we may need to revisit the requirements for the installation of street trees. Because I see newer neighborhoods, which have the, the, it's a sheet that goes down between the sidewalk, and the roots are jumping those, they're going under them, around them, and the sidewalks are lifting. You know, sidewalks that are 10 years old are lifting. And these are the, the best methods we've got to prevent this from happening. And similarly, the homeowners, excuse me, the homeowners, if they see the tree is lifting the sidewalk, they really can't do anything about it. We require them to keep the tree, which is why I've seen some neighborhoods where they allow the trees to die during the drought. Because now the tree, tree's dead, they can take it out. So is there some way that we can, you know, find a better way to install these where they don't ultimately lift sidewalks? Either different trees, different methods of planting. In my yard, I actually used sort of a plastic barrel to drive the roots down. So maybe we can revisit that, so all the homeowners don't end up dealing with this every five to seven years. So another thing is, as far as funding it, is there a mechanism where perhaps we could, a lien could be put on the property, so that when the property sells, or the title transfers, that the, the payments are made to cover the cost of the sidewalk? Because if somebody's been in the home for a long time, you know, fixed income, it may be a real hardship for them to spend $1,500 on a sidewalk. Whereas, it may be an opportunity to defer that for a couple of years, until the, the land or the, the home transfers or sells. As far as the, are you looking for input on the, the subsidy, whether that's continued, discontinued? What's the interest of the council at this point?
Concept on whether there are any items on the list that you want to have removed, or any items that you'd like to have added to the list as far as consideration? Because we're going to do a lot more refinement.
Hashed out a bit more. Okay. So this is coming back again. All right. Any additional refinements, or?
No, no, just, I just want to make sure that we get a simple summary of what's our bottom line, and where are we going?
And I don't think a new funding mechanism is likely. But, you know, you can insert new funding mechanism here for any number of things around town, so.
Infrastructure bond. Okay. Anything else at this point? Okay, so bring it back, and we'll consider it again. Thanks to the camp for doing the work that they do.
And your adoption of the actual prioritization policy?
Right. I'll, I'll move to approve the prioritization.
Seconded by Councilmember Coumber. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, the City Council Subcommittee to Conduct Interviews for Advisory Bodies. Looking at where we have been previously, we had Werner Spodowsky, and then we had Marchand and Werner. So looks like it's going to be Carling and Marchand. He's not here and can't protest. We'll appoint him. Got it? The designation of the alternates and voters for the LOCC meeting. This coincides with the Alameda County San Joaquin Regional Rail Meeting. So I don't know if there were folks on the regional rail meeting that were interested in going to the LOCC. Of course, we'll be having that meeting later on this week, so we can perhaps bring it up then. Who's going to the, who's planning on going to League of California Cities? Ooh, okay. Well, Councilmember Carling is the representative to LOCC. So I will appoint myself and, and Carling. Okay. Councilmember Carling is our representative to the conference. So I'll appoint him the, the voting delegate, and then I'll be the alternate. Because I've got two meetings going up to that. Okay. Onto committee reports and matters initiated. Anything else before we close this thing out? Okay. Councilmember Coumber. Committee reports, matters.
Just attended a LAVTA meeting last week. We discussed many things, of the two that come immediately to mind. My notes are in the car, as always. And, or the approving the new bus designs, the new designs for the, the rapid, to make the city buses match more closely with the rapid design, as the buses will be changing and upgrading to the newer designs, too. So as, I thought the designs were very cool. So pleased to see that coming soon. We also got a report from a disability advocate there who mentioned about having some, having some troubles and wants the district to take up looking at a new restraint system, which is being taken up by management over there right now. That's the, the biggest thing about, I didn't experience it when I tried it out, but she does, with a lot heavier chair than I have, so.
Higher center of gravity, too.
Yes.
But they're, they're working in their meeting with her.
Yeah.
Is many times necessary, so.
They'll figure it out.
Councilmember Warner? Vice Mayor?
I'll start. So Thursday, June 1st, I had the honor of attending the Gillig ribbon-cutting ceremony. That was a great event. 800 employees, there was probably about, what? About 1,000 people there with all the guests in attendance. The facility is phenomenal. Again, it's, it's leaps and bounds better than what they had in Hayward. A lot of work went into it. I think they, they mentioned one of the stunning statistics. They only lost two days of productivity during the move from Hayward out to Livermore, where typically, you can expect weeks of lost productivity. But they did it in a manner that was very efficient.
So that was, it was very, very impressive. Councilmember Coomer already mentioned the LAVTA meeting, everything's going along swimmingly at LAVTA. The new bus designs are great and they just, after we went through consultants and couldn't really find a design that we liked, Gillig designed the bus for us. So that was very nice of them to come up with the design. So you should see a standardized, standardized design on all the buses soon. On the 7th of this month, I attended the East Bay Community Choice Energy Meeting. We're in the process of hiring consultants and also in the middle of a CEO search, so we should have actual staff on board shortly. The importance with that is, in terms of staffing up, is it's going to relieve the burden from the county staff who are currently staffing the EBCE, so it'll be great to get a CEO on board soon. On the 10th, the Livermore Rodeo Parade was just as fun, if not more fun than the previous year, it seems to happen every year. It was great, the amount of turnout. I do have to mention one thing that was kind of neat to experience is the rodeo bus this year, it was the first year that we had actual people on the bus other than the driver.
People on the bus.
Yeah, we hacked out all of our liability issues and all the concerns and we had people riding the 1966 GMC perfectly restored bus, so that was, that was a lot of fun as usual. Other than that, I have no matters to initiate.
Okay. On May 25th, I made a presentation at the SME of Silicon Valley Manufacturing Conference and talked about how manufacturers returning to Livermore, Gillig example. Saying, we had the ACTC Board Meeting, we're at an update on federal, state and local legislative activities and we approved the legislative positions. On the same meeting, we had a Bay Area Plan 2040 update and received an update on the South County Capitol projects. The, let's see, the 20, yes, 25th, we also had the Livermoreum Celebration in the downtown. Councilmember Carling and Councilmember Coomer were both there, had a great performance by Element 116, the band, and recognized a number of the students for their excellence and as well as the Teller Awards from Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. The 29th, we had Memorial Day Ceremony in Pleasanton and I also represented the city at the awards of the Quilts of Valor for veterans from World War II and Korea and Vietnam. 31st of May, Councilmember Carling and I graduated the 31st Citizens Police Academy. That's remarkable, we get, a lot of our volunteers for the community come from the Citizens Police Academy. Also attended the Tri Valley City Council Meeting that night along with a number of our council members. And we wondered some of the new strategies for the federal and legislative agenda, looking for more efficient and local focus. One of the cool things that didn't come out about the Gillig bus ribbon cutting on the June 1st was that one of the, one of the first buses rolling off the line is a LAVTA bus. So the sales tax for that bus is going in to pay Measure BB for more transportation projects in Alameda County. So it's keeping all that, those dollars close. June 2nd, this is why I can't talk anymore, is the voice is shot. I attended the San Joaquin Regional Rail Board Meeting in Stockton where we discussed the budget and also community outreach. And same afternoon, I made a presentation at a smart city conference in San Jose about how Livermore by definition doesn't perform as a smart city, but the technologies that allow smart cities to operate are created right here in Livermore. June 4th, sad day, Finn, our police dog, had his walk off retirement. So Finn retired after eight years or 56 years in people equivalents, retired from the force. And June 9th, we had Innovation Tri Valley Update on healthcare for matters initiated. So I've been following on social media where people are saying that the city is going to be making millions of dollars on the host community impact fee. And in fact, I recently got an email talking about how the city's going to be making millions of dollars to the general fund off the host community impact fee. And it's even on a website, how the host community impact fee could be used to build new facilities or to operate new facilities in the downtown. And my belief is, all the money from the HCIF should go to support the theater that we already have, the Bankhead Theater. We don't need to be building another theater or another thing if the Bankhead is, is still in jeopardy. So what I would propose is to have staff bring a policy back that any of the extra money, and as we all know, there is no extra money, that that HCIF money is dedicated to the Bankhead. That, for example, that, we heard the report last week or last meeting, 17 million dollars of cost versus roughly 18 million in revenue. We've seen some projections of 24 million dollars. Well, if there is any quotes, extra money, I would like to propose that that perhaps go into a, an endowment or an operating fund to support the Bankhead. So rather than have other ideas running around to use those for something else, I would like to have a policy to come out that those dollars are only to support the Bankhead Theater. So this would be coming back, but.
If I may, I mean, you know, I was in the middle of the effort to save the Bankhead, understood the financials. And any of us know, in the financial world, you can make all the projections you want, but I'm not comfortable thinking there is going to be any extra money. But we also know that the Bankhead cannot operate at a profit for its size. It cannot ever do that. And so it is highly dependent on contributions. So should there ever be any kind of extra from the HCIF, which I'm not sure there would be? It should be, in my opinion, you know, looked at as a, as dedicated first to the Bankhead and I don't know, and so I, I agree that staff should be directed to come back with a, an analysis and recommendation to consider making sure that everybody understands what that HCIF is for.
It's not to be spent for anything else.
Right.
Vice Mayor, you're leaning?
Yeah, we, we, I don't know how many years ago that we did have a presentation on the HCIF and the projected funding, so maybe in a future council meeting, I don't know if it needs to be soon, we could have another update, update the projections. I think it'd be useful for, you know, the two new council members to see it as well. Not that you can't go back and look at it on tape, but if there's been any changes in the projections since our last discussion, I think it would be useful and at appropriate time. Again, it doesn't have to be next couple of months, it could be six months, whatever. We come back and we take a look at it.
Well, I think, wait a minute, if I could just elaborate on that, we're not just talking about getting an update on the financials, we're actually saying, let's think about this, because I mean, I, we've, I don't think we're going to learn anything different. And I, we do know that the tipping fees, you know, from San Francisco is moving off to other places, so, and as we generally get better at recycling and we're going to be hitting our growth caps, it's not at all obvious that there's, there's any factors out there that's going to be giving us lots of extra money. So I think we can tee up the question and so I would, I'm in agreement with the mayor's request for staff to come back with an analysis and a recommendation.
Or a policy statement that the HCIF would be used to support the Bankhead.
Right.
And not for other purposes.
I, you know, right now, I don't think there's any financial analysis that says it would be wise to leave it open.
Yeah, but I said, there are, there are suggestions to use HCIF for other, for other purposes.
Well, I think, and just let me.
Jason is beginning to twitch over, I can tell.
Well, you're, you're dangerously close to having given direction here, so let's see if I feed it back, if we can get three people to nod. So you have a current HCIF policy which directs how those funds are to be utilized. It also directs that those funds are to be held in anticipation of their future use should in any individual year, the actual costs not exceed the revenue, I'm in there. So that is your existing policy. What I heard was two items, they're different. One is to bring back a, an amendment to that policy to clarify that at essentially the end of the lifetime, when the city is responsible for cost to the Bankhead, and we have to remember there'd have to be a couple of interim steps there. But when essentially, at any time when the debt on the Bankhead is, is paid off, the nonprofit who is the tenant on that has the ability to acquire that building. So that would essentially trigger the question of, you know, what to do with, if there were any remaining funds at that particular time. My understanding is what you'd like to at least consider is a policy that would dedicate any of those remaining funds that were unused at that moment for the Bankhead, designated for the Bankhead and bring back policy options for how to do that, whether that be a capital reserve, an operating reserve, something like that, that those funds would ultimately be dedicated to for the Bankhead.
That is my suggestion.
The second by council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Spodowsky, was to actually update our analysis. It will have been three years by the time that comes back. That certainly you can do, you actually, by your existing policy, have a requirement that we return to you once a year. We've traditionally done that in October, so all of these things could come back in that time period. And if, and if we did want to add that second step, if we got three nods to that, we could do both of those together and, and bring that back in October to you. Does that work? So we'll do two things, we'll bring back some policy options for you to, to consider adoption and the second is to update your projections.
Any further issues, comments, go to the order? Many adjourned.